Testing. Are they up on the TVs, too? All right. We'll go ahead and call the order. We'll go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance if you will stand with me.
I'm not.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go to roll call.
Councilmember Kay.
Here.
Councilmember Strowman.
Here.
Councilmember Engel.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Walker.
Here.
Mayor Hagan.
Here. And we'll go on to presentations here. City manager, would you like to take it from here?
Sure, I can introduce the item. As council is aware, we did have a recent vacancy of a planning commissioner who no longer resides in town and had to resign his seat. This occurred in January of this year. Through January and February, we opened a recruitment and through that process, we received four applications for the one vacant seat. And per our process, council identified tonight's meeting as the day that we would do interviews for those four applicants for the one seat. And so with that, I can turn it over to the council. You do have a set of questions in front of you if you so choose to use those. And we can call up applicants one at a time, perhaps in the order listed on the agenda or whatever order you prefer. And then if council is to a point where a selection can be made, we can make a selection tonight. Or if more deliberation is needed, we can push it to a subsequent meeting.
All right, I guess we'll just start with the first one and ask, everyone has a question to ask? And we'll just go down the line and ask a question.
Hopefully, no one.
So that would be Jenny Thompson.
Good evening.
Good evening. My question would just be a simple one. We're kind of a small, obviously a small town, family-oriented town. How do you foresee, you know, kind of directing the planning commission in the right direction? Or what would that right direction be for you?
Sure. So I grew up here in Escalon and I enjoy it being a small town. My husband and I, after moving away for a brief time as adults, moved back here to start our family. So I do love the small town of Escalon. However, I do worry that we have become stagnant. And so I would like to see controlled growth, mostly in like the commercial aspect. So I see my role as basically making sure that we are approving quality projects that are going to improve the quality of life as an Escalon resident.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim?
Yeah. So Escalon, as we know it today, is partly the result of planning decisions made in the past. What would you point to as places where this has worked well and/or where it hasn't worked well? This can be parts of town, individual developments, something about the overall experience of being in the city, et cetera.
Sure. I would say one area that I don't feel has worked well, although we, I'm sure, hope it would, is like the plaza area of town. It's a great spot right off of 120. However, I don't think it was planned correctly. I mean, we've had to make changes to the way we use driveways. And we've had a lot of problems keeping businesses in the plaza, which I'm sure partly is, you know, because of the location and age of the building at this point. But I do think it's just, it's a messy area that I think that if it had been planned correctly, could have been better than it is now. I think an area that was planned well would be probably like the neighborhood right behind us. Although it was built out in phases, I feel like the streets were thought out well. We have nice narrow streets that make for slower traffic, which is what we need in neighborhoods. We have a beautiful park that's incorporated. So I would, I would see that as like one that has been, that was planned better than some of the other areas.
Great, thank you.
Jeremy, Mr., sorry, Councilman Engel.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Hi Jenny, thank you for applying. The question I have for you is, how would you handle being put under political pressure to make a decision?
Sure. So I don't see an issue with that. I am a very strong individual with my own opinions. And being a lifelong Escalon resident, like I know what our town needs and wants. I'm plugged in, I'm on Escalon residents. My whole life is here. So I feel like regardless of, you know, if you or some other political person was pressuring me to make a decision one way or other, like I don't see that swaying me. It's never bothered me in the past when I was a staff member here. So I don't see it as a problem as planning commissioner.
Thank you.
Councilman Sean.
Hi Jenny.
Hi.
Where do you see Escalon in five years? And then where do you see Escalon in 10 years?
So in five years, I don't see a whole lot of change. Five years, not a lot of time. I hope we continue to see small progress, you know, small wins. But I don't see any drastic things happening in the next five years. In the next 10 years, that could be a different story, especially I know the city manager has been working on some economic development ideas, you know, that we have some focuses, better focuses, I think, as a city now that we can really like hone in on. So in 10 years, hopefully, we see some great commercial growth down Highway 120 on both sides of town. And then hopefully, small but good growth for residential, because we do need some more housing, I feel like. Nothing crazy, but I do think we need to add some.
Thank you.
Councilman Kay.
Very good to see you, Ms. Thompson. I'm pretty sure I only got to have one meeting with you before you left us. Great to see you, just wanted to say that. What do you think the most important thing as far as our growth in the planning commission is? What do you think that we should be focused on?
I think that our main focus should be on commercial. I think in order for this town to thrive, we need to have that tax base. We need, especially now that our sales tax is going up, which is great, you know, we need to really capture the most amount of money we can through the traffic through town, especially on Highway 120. So I hope to see the most focus on growing Highway 120 commercial-wise.
Thank you.
Any other questions up here? Okay, we'll go to the next candidate. Thank you Jenny. And that would be Zachary, hopefully I say this right, Encinitas. Is there Zachary? No Zachary online at all? No? Okay. Then we'll go to Douglas Sims.
Good evening.
Good evening. Same question, as a small town. Yeah, what would your focus kind of be as far as directing, if you had to direct the direction of our town?
All right, well, I've been here for about 25 years. My wife grew up here. I think the town has a good direction, staying small like we are. I think that's a good direction, but we need to kind of capitalize that. I think, you know, there's not a lot of things that you can walk to. I live over by the high school. It'd be nice if more of the downtown was more open to the, in the evenings and there was more of those kind of things to do. Maybe finding businesses that offer more for the people of the town or restaurant-type uses, less taco trucks, I guess, because it seems like we've got one on every corner now and it kind of must make it hard for real restaurants to make a living doing that. Nothing big that I would change. It seems like we're going in a good, slow direction and that's kind of what Escalon's always done.
Thank you.
Okay, and we're just going down the line and I'll be asking the same question to all the candidates, so this might be a little bit redundant. But Escalon, as we know it today, is partly the result of planning decisions made in the past. So what would you point to as some places where this has worked well and/or how has it not worked very well? And this can be parts of town, individual developments, something about the overall experience of being in the city, something.
Well, I think having three dollar stores in town was kind of a taken, we kind of got taken advantage of by the dollar stores, I think. And then over in my neighborhood, I know there was a, there's a, the building where 1429 Restaurant is now, when that project was developed, I think that was kind of a planning mistake, putting three stories next to a single-story residential neighborhood. It seems like, you know, cushioning residential from commercials is an important thing and we need to be aware of that. Good things, I like the new, I like this center, this is a nice, nice design, nicely laid out. This new project, gosh, there haven't been that many big new projects in town.
That right.
It'd be nice to see a few more.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Down the line to Mr., Councilman Engel.
Do you go by Doug or Douglas?
I go by Doug.
Doug. Hi Doug, thank you for applying, appreciate your efforts there. My question is, how would you handle being put under political pressure to make a decision?
My career, I've been a building inspector for about 30 years. During that time, I actually, towards the end of my career, I ended up being an inspector of record for power plant projects here in the state of California, where I was actually the acting deputy building official for the state of California. You get a lot of political pressure when you're doing a project like that. One instance of that was, we were finishing up a power plant project and they wanted to get their natural gas turned on. But there were certain things that hadn't been finished, that we couldn't turn the gas on, it couldn't, we couldn't guarantee it was safe. Boy, did I get, I got calls from senators and everybody else. And all I, you know, I just explained, you know, we want to make a safe project, we want to make sure it's done right. And we moved on. And they got a whole crew, they actually, over the weekend, they got, brought in extra people, did the work that was required. And within two days, we had the gas on. But I've, I've worked in that kind of situations where there's pressure. I worked for cities, I worked for the city of San Leandro for about 11 years, worked in the building department. But our building department was, it was development services and the person next to me was a planner. So we worked, you know, kind of hand in hand on projects and could talk about what, what was needed and what, what I needed to look for, for them and that kind of stuff. And I just think my overall knowledge is going to be something that could be helpful for us, working out projects and working out the details on projects as they come through the city.
Thank you Doug.
Councilman Sean.
I actually have two questions if I'm permitted to do so.
Yeah.
And in fairness to Doug, I'm going to ask Ms. Thompson to come back and answer the question. So you mentioned too many dollar stores. If you were seated on the planning commission and you had a fourth dollar store come to the city of Escalon and it met all of the zoning requirements, all of the planning requirements, what would you do as a planning commissioner?
I would have to approve it. You've got to live within the rules and if you, if you're going to change the rules as you go, that's not going to work.
And my next question, you've heard previously, where do you see Escalon in five years and where do you see Escalon in 10 years?
Okay. In five years, I'd like to see, maybe, maybe we'd get the housing project going out there on the highway and have that figured out and have that moving forward. You know, if that was, if that was all worked out and was going forward, that'd be a pretty good accomplishment for five years, I think. It sounds like with all the details that have to be worked out with that. And then in 10 years, maybe, you know, filling in some more of these empty sites along McHenry here and building up a little bit more of a business, more, more services for the public, you know, maybe some clothing stores, some other kinds of stores, here's more things for the city. And maybe a few things on 120 that can attract more of the tourists going through and we can get a few more of them to stop and donate to the city here.
Thank you Doug.
Mr. Sims, thank you for applying and coming in and answering our questions. Appreciate all, all of you that have offered up your, your time. Same question that I asked Jenny. Where do you think that we should be focused on as, as a city in our growth and what, what direction do you think that we should be headed as far as our, our growth?
Well, I think you want to be sure and listen to the neighborhood and the people out there. I think you, I go on Facebook and see the city page and I hear there's a very vocal group of people involved in this town. And they have a definite direction, they want it to stay small, they want us to be very careful who comes into town, make sure we get quality people and quality product, things they can be proud of.
Appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you for your honesty there. We'll go, you had a question you wanted for Jenny?
Yeah, I just would like Jenny to answer.
Answer that real quick. Thank you Douglas, or Doug, sorry.
So let me repeat the question. So you're sitting as a planning commissioner and you have a fourth dollar store come to the city for approval. It meets the zoning, it meets all of the planning documents, but you know it's a fourth dollar store within the city of Escalon. What would you do?
I mean, I have to kind of echo Doug with this. If, if it meets the requirements, but not just the requirements, but as long as it meets the requirements and the project itself is a quality project, I, I don't see how I could say no without opening the city up to liability, honestly. So I do think there's some leeway there to where, you know, just because it meets zoning and it meets code, doesn't mean it has to get approved. There's other factors that go in for safety concerns and aesthetics. So I do think there's some leeway there, but in general, if it meets all the requirements and it's a quality project, I would probably approve it.
Thank you.
We'll go on to our, I think our last candidate, Nick Obligacion, is that how you say it?
That works.
I hope I didn't butcher, butcher it too bad.
Nope, that, that works.
Okay. Well, I'll just start off with, you know, it's a small town and, you know, where, if you sat on the board, would you, you know, want to direct this, you know, town?
Really, it's sustainable growth and making sure that what we do bring to town, we can cover with the infrastructure we currently have. So a lot of it will have to do just to make sure that it's sustainable, whatever comes in.
Thank you. Go on to Pro Tim.
So Escalon, as we know it today, is partly the result of planning decisions made in the past. What would you point to as places where this has worked well and/or where it has not worked well? And this can be parts of town, individual developments, something about the overall experience of the city, et cetera.
Right. So I've been here for 34 years. We happened to show up here by chance. We were actually headed to Oakdale and back in the early 90s, the fog was so bad that you couldn't see the end of the hood of your car. And we actually turned into the subdivision right off Walnut and ended up buying a house. We've raised our family here, my daughters both bought houses here, so we really like the direction the city's been going. There's a lot of projects that have gone on in the 34 years that we've been here. I don't think there's any one project that I would say is horrible. There's some that I'm not, I don't particularly care for. I think maybe the cart came before the horse and I know that they're probably sitting in the second row, but I'm going to say the Weldway project wasn't a, wasn't a high on my list of priorities, just because I thought the intersection in that particular area of 120 should have been developed first before that went in, just because of sheer size of that, of that project. Good things, I love the way McHenry has developed, the city offices along here have been great. It would be nice to see things push on the east side of town would be nice. And then the Liberty Park Business Plan, which is going to develop that area north of 120 at Brennan, that will be real nice to come in in the future, however long that takes. And that'll kind of meet up with the next question, I'm going to get the five and 10 year plan, that's going to develop and that's going to be huge for Escalon. But I think if that's planned appropriately and it's sustainable and we're not taxing city services, I think that's going to be a, that's going to be a great project.
Thank you.
Councilman Engel.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Hi Nick, thank you also for applying, appreciate your time. My question to you is, how would you handle being put under political pressure to make a decision?
So I spent my entire life, or good majority of the last 30 years, in public service. I retired as a police chief of a neighboring city, so I dealt with political pressure all the time. You make decisions based on facts and what's presented to you and the political pressure goes away. I mean, they understand how things work and you deal with facts and you make good common sense decisions, making decisions based on the information that you have. And again, political pressure I dealt with my years as a chief and that was not, that was not an issue. As long as you're upfront and transparent, that all goes away.
Thank you.
Councilman Strowman.
Hey Nick.
How you doing?
So you answered one part, the five-year part. Could you answer the 10-part, 10-year, where do you see Escalon in 10 years?
Absolutely. You know, it's, Escalon's all spend that attraction because it's a small town, it's got that small-town charm. Would I want to see it grow too large and too much? No. I, I think the way it's being planned out now, I think sustainability is a huge, you'll hear me keep saying that, because I, I hate to see things get built and then the city suffers, the city doesn't have the tax base to work with. So in 10 years, I just think that small, minimal growth, as it's been for the last 30 years, I think is really important. And again, listening to the public on what they want. And I'll say this, and not to say anything bad about social media, but I'm not a social media guy, I don't listen to that. I like to do face-to-face, tell me what you need, tell me what you want. I think that's what's important. A lot of people on social media will go well beyond what they need to say, just because they want to be heard. And I, I don't think that's responsible. And I know I'm going to hear that from some people, but that's okay. So again, 10 years, I just think if we continue on the rate we're going, keep that small-town charm, don't overbuild, I think we'll have the same attraction that we have had for the last 30 years.
And then for my second question, there's a fourth, you're on the planning commission, there's a fourth dollar store coming into Escalon. And it meets the zoning and it meets the planning requirements, but it is a fourth dollar store within the city of Escalon. What would you do?
Dollar store or $1.25 store? I had to make that.
$1.33 less tax.
You know, I mean, the thing is, you know, you make your decisions based on facts that you have. So if it has met all the requirements, again, we're here to please the majority of people, not everyone. We all know, and you five know, you're not going to please 100% of the residents. So you make the decision based on facts, so if what's presented meets a criteria to be approved, then you approve it.
Thank you.
Councilman Kay.
How you doing Nick? Good to see you. Same question, what, what direction do you think that we should be focused on as planning and growth and all of that fun stuff for the city?
I think where we should be focused is, is on mixed growth, commercial, residential. We have some manufacturing coming in, so I think it'll be a balance of what the people want to see versus what the city can accommodate. So as far as housing developments that are coming in, I think we should, we only have 75 building permits a year, but, you know, that's slow enough growth, but we need to match our commercial with the residential growth so that it kind of goes hand in hand, so that we don't have people leaving the city to go shopping and then we don't, we prefer them to.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other questions? Thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you.
So I believe that's it, right? We don't have anyone else? How does council want to proceed? You guys want time to chew this stuff over or do you feel like you're in a position to make a decision?
Do we need to, is there anything necessary in this process next? Do we need to open it up? Do we need, what do we need to do? Can we just talk here?
You can talk, but you should go to public comment, too.
Yeah, so I don't think we've had a bad, a bad candidate. If this was our planning commission, I would not be upset, so.
Yeah.
I just need a moment to think about how to move forward with what we want to do.
Okay. Public input, anyone like to make a comment or, or speak to one of the candidates? No? Any online? And we'll bring it back to Adias. How do we want to proceed? You want to think about this and bring it back to the next meeting, or do you guys feel like you have a confident nomination?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a staff question? Do you have a planning commission, meaning plan for Nov- April?
I think of the agenda. I don't think we have items for the April Planning Commission as of right now.
I just, I have an overall comment and, and it was already said, but I believe all three of you are more than qualified to be on the planning commission. You each offer a differing perspective, a very valid perspective and, and things that we really look for, for planning commissioners. And really appreciate you and the three of you, as well as Zachary, taking the time to apply for the planning commission and whatever this council decides as a body. If you don't make it, I would strongly encourage you to consider applying again, because all of you have great skillsets that I feel like are what we need for the city of Escalon Planning Commission.
I would echo that sentiment. It's, definitely have a pretty good qualified crew here. So I think as a group, we just have to decide, do we need more time to kind of chew over the candidates because they are so, so good?
I'm, I'm ready to make a nomination, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate Jenny, Jenny Thompson.
Okay, do we have a second? All, all nominate, I'll go ahead and second that. So all in favor? Any other nominations? We got to do that first, right?
You can, if you feel like there's other opinions out there, and then we'll take the motion in order, if there's multiple motions.
Any other nominations?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Nick Obligacion.
Okay. We'll start with Jenny first. All in favor?
You need a second.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry. You got a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
So we have a second for both, we'll go Jenny and then Nick. For Jenny, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
And.
I abstain.
You're abstaining, okay. Well, we have three votes, so we don't need to go.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll go Jenny and the other two of you, I think, if you could, next time it opens, I think it would be a really good thing to see your names again, because you were good candidates. Thank you.
I'd like to echo the, the rest of council, all three of you made that a very tough decision, honestly. A lot tougher than I expected, you're reading through, you know, the applications and everything. I knew that it was going to kind of be a tough decision, but all three of you answered those questions phenomenally and would be an absolute asset to this city. So I would strongly encourage the, the two of you that didn't make it, if there's another vacancy, to please reapply.
Mr. Mayor, can I add something?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I don't.
So, I don't know how closely you've looked at the agenda, but later on in the agenda this evening, we're going to be talking about possible Economic Development Committee. And so, I would really encourage you guys to consider applying for that as well, and congratulations, Jenny.
Okay, we'll go on to the consent calendar. Does anyone want to pull anything off the consent calendar?
I would, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull the meeting minutes from last meeting.
Okay, so number two.
Two or three?
Talking about special meeting minutes, or three?
Number two.
Number two, okay. So, we'll pull two. We'll go ahead and take a, go ahead and take a vote, I guess?
Can I make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item number two?
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, is the public allowed to comment on the pulling consent calendar?
The public's entitled to comment on the consent calendar. Once it's pulled, they can provide comment on the item that was pulled, because that's going to be a separate vote.
Okay, so we have a member of the public in the back that has a concern, but I don't know if it was that agenda item or not, so.
Okay. Can you come up to the front for a sec, see what the concern is? Number six?
Yes, on the, on the food recovery.
Okay.
Couple of questions about them, but I'm not concerned. I, I haven't seen it before, so.
Okay. Is this something that we can publicly pull, or no?
It's the council's decision whether they want to pull anything, but you can take public comment on anything on the consent calendar, but the council decides which items it's going to pull.
Well, I, I'll pull six, just to hear what you have to say.
Are you amending my motion?
So, I'd like to amend your motion, if you don't mind.
I don't mind.
Okay. You have a second, okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay, and no abstains. Okay. So, we'll go to two first, and then six.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I, I'm requesting an amendment to my section of the minutes where I noted about.
Can we pull that up, or, so you can?
Almost there. Okay, there we go. The second sentence, actually, the, the third sentence. So, it's noted, "He proposed increasing the level of notification for LLD public hearings." I actually requested increasing the level of notification for all public hearings. And, and what I was saying, and maybe it didn't come out clearly enough, was that the discussion on the LLDs really made me aware that we needed to create a, a greater notification, but not, I don't want to limit LL, greater notifications for just LLD public hearings. I mean, it seems relatively simple that we could advertise public hearings on the website, on the billboard, on city social media, not just LLD public hearings. And so, I'm requesting that modification to the minutes.
That is the way I recall hearing it?
Thank you.
All right, we'll amend that, then. We'll go to.
So, it'll come back at the next meeting for amended, unless it's a very, staff feels like it can make that, okay. So, the motion could be to adopt the minutes as amended.
You want to make a motion?
Do we take that now, or do we wait till we hear number six?
These are separate items right now.
Okay. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve item number two, the meeting minutes as amended.
And we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? No opposed. Okay. So, we'll go to number six, and hear out Mrs. Hill.
I hadn't heard this. Of course, I know I've missed a couple of meetings in the last few months because of this ongoing thing here. So, I just wanted some clarification on the food recovery. The, the agreement with the county that is proposed or before you, would that be just to, for example, the restaurants and the grocery stores, or is that also with the food recovery places? I think we have two here in town. We have Care, and then there's the Escalon Strong.
Just with the food-producing businesses, so that.
Just the grocery and the, and, okay, so that's all it would involve? There's no oversight on, like, the Care facility or the Escalon Strong?
Not as part of this.
Recovery?
Yeah, not as part of this MOU. The county has agreed to take on this role for city, because we don't have the expertise or staffing levels.
City manager, so, so, so I got this right, I have this right, sorry, proper English. You're saying basically that they'll come in and make sure all the, all the businesses that are in that kind of area, or that genre, will be basically, you know, getting on board with one of these food programs?
Mm-hmm.
Compliance.
Compliance.
Okay, so the compliance aspect of it, then, would fall on the county, not on us as a city?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I needed. Thank you.
I believe, and, correct me if I'm wrong, this is a yearly contract with the county that we do, and we already do this with the county. Is this correct, or is this brand-new?
This is new. This is new state law.
Okay.
That we are implementing.
Okay.
It's new.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you.
And this will come before us a year from now, though. Is this correct? Is this one year at a time, City Manager?
Let's see here.
Mr. Haskin, would you like to say something?
Okay, I'll get that answer for you.
Thank you.
One thing when I read it, I noted that although the city won't be charging any fees, that the county will be charging the individual businesses a fee. And you might consider that you're putting an additional burden on some of our local businesses, especially the grocery stores that are at a very small margin. So, I, you know, we're, it's up between a state mandate and increasing fees for our, for our own businesses.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a way around that or not, to be honest with you. City Manager is there?
The, the county has indicated they could, or may, charge at a later date. Perhaps, at this point, I think they have indicated that they don't plan to, but they are leaving themselves open for the possibility that they, they could.
Yeah, well, if I was selling it to the city, that'd be my language. All right, thank you.
But to Mr. Haskin's, excuse, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
To Mr. Haskin's point, I mean, are we putting our local food producers at risk for the county to come in and, and make sure they're complying the law, with the law, and then they'll hand them a $500 bill? I mean, that's, that's not cool.
Can we amend that, like, basically say we would, we're okay with this program as long as it's not charging a fee?
Or that any, maybe any fee structure that is added to it, that we have the opportunity to debate on it first?
Yeah, I think that would be probably the best plan of attack, to indicate that, you know, any new provision, not initially established, would be brought back before the city. And just to answer the first question, and maybe they tie in, "So, subject to compliance with the terms and conditions, the term of this MOU shall commence on the effective date and shall automatically be renewed, renewed from year to year on the same terms and conditions." So, to answer your question, Mayor Protem, it's automatic. We don't necessarily have to see it each year unless the council so chooses, and then I think we could make the argument that, you know, perhaps terms or conditions are, are changed. We, we can bring that back.
So, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve item number six, with the caveat that if the county so chooses to implement a fee structure, that, that is brought back to council for review and approval.
We have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. No nays? And any abstain? No abstain, okay. We'll go on to staff communications.
Start on that side.
Good evening, everyone, mayor, council members. We have the treasurer's report for February. Nothing remarkable. It is a fairly small batch of checks that were paid. Staff is busy right now getting ready for what's noted as third quarter in our budget cycle. That'll be the end of March, and that will very quickly lead to the year end. Our, our current audit right now is looking at 2024, so we're wrapping that up. We had hoped to have that done by the end of March. I'm still pushing for that, but realistically, that's gonna, that's gonna be a, a tight one. It's probably going to be our first meeting in April, possibly the second. They are working very diligently to close it up. I've let them know we're, we're done. We'd like it, we'd like the report now. And shortly after that, we'll have our, our end, we'll be in preparation for our new budget, some budget meetings, and get right into our 2026 year. It'll be a busy time. So, we're all looking forward to that and getting everything wrapped up.
So, you feel pretty confident we're going to hit our numbers?
I do, I do. We've all been working very hard. The team has really put an emphasis on spending as little as possible on everything that we need, but not anymore. You know, so we were kind of dozing all this before it got popular. So, although there's no real fraud or abuse, there's always room for improvement, and I think that's what we're all striving for. So, I'm, I'm confident in the, the number that we have for this year, and in next year. We're already forecasting what we're going to have, so.
Thank you.
It'll be a busy time, and there'll be lots of reports forthcoming. Other than that, I don't have anything else, so.
Appreciate your, your efforts. It doesn't, it doesn't go unnoticed.
Thank you.
In February, Officer Gek completed his post-motors course, so he's all good to go for riding the motorcycle. Officer Jamal's completing, completed his field training officer course, so he's our newest field training officer, and he is currently training our newest hire, Officer Gunter, who started on February 18th. In February, Officer Palamino led the department with 16 arrests. Officer DiGiulio led the department in citations with 37, and Officer Raymond was just behind her with 36. So, I believe, feel she deserves an honorable mention.
Sounds like it. It's tough to keep up with that crew. Any other questions for Chief up here? Any questions for Slenda? I forgot to ask. No? Okay, we'll go on to Public Works.
Good evening, mayor and council. Couple of updates. One is the dent sidewalk project. We, it's been going very well, although we have had a few rain days. We were ahead of schedule. As of last week, we did complete all the concrete work that was needed for the project. So, hopefully after this evening's rain, we will start concentrating on getting the pavement put back towards the end of the week, and then tidying up most everyone's landscapes and fine-tuning there. So, hopefully here in the next two to three weeks, we can be completely finished with that project. It's gone fairly well. Also, speaking of that with the rain, I just really want to give our Public Works crew a big thank you for the hard work they've done this last month, trying to get ready for baseball. Having the rain came. I'm sure people were out and about during the rain. It was hard to find any flooding spots during the rainstorm, because of how well they're doing. And then unfortunately, we did have to cancel some games over the weekend, but crews were out there Saturday morning at 6:00 trying to get it ready, but the rain just was too much force to, to do so. But I just wanted to tell them a big thank you. They've worked extremely hard this last month to, to do what they've done, so I, I appreciate, appreciate all their hard work. Also, last week, we have made a tentative offer to Gavin Brown for Maintenance Worker One. Had some very good applicants. It was an extremely hard decision to make, but I feel like we've made a good one. Get him through the background process and get him on board, and hope that kind of works out.
You said Gavin?
Gavin.
Gavin.
That's it for Public Works, unless you have any questions?
Well, I'd just like to echo, echo the thank you to the Public Works. They did a great job out there for, you know, what, what they're working with, so it looks real nice. So, keep up the good work. Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got a quick question. The internet now, out at the corp yard, what, what can you tell us?
Oh, man, it's, it's nice. It's less time in the office throwing things at the computer screen. It's, it's fabulous. I mean, we literally went from a 15 to 100 gig in a matter of a, a day, so it's been tremendous. I, I thank you very much for approving that project and allowing that through. It's making Public Works life much easier.
We don't want to make it too easy on you.
Yeah. It sure has helped, I'll tell you that much. Thank you. Glad to hear it.
I do want to say, before we move on, that the, the lack of flooding has not gone unnoticed. That is a huge improvement over previous years. You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I just had one, I just had one, but I was noticing some weeds are kind of coming up through town. Didn't know if we could get ahead of that, or let people know, hey, let's try to clean it up, especially on the major thoroughfares.
Yeah.
Because that reflects on the whole town.
Definitely, yeah. We'll put a sense on that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. City Manager?
Thank you. Couple items. As noted behind you, the city in the past week sort of celebrated its birthday, March 12, 1957, so it's 68 years old this past week. I was going to mention the switch to IERA and the improved speeds, particularly out at the Corporation Yard, but I got beat to that punch. But it, it has been good, working with IERA through the transition, all the improvements they, you know, they did to, to their service and, and our service at the PD Tower. It's been a smooth transition so far, and we are happy to see the improved speeds. Also mentioned that we did open a recruitment for the Development Services Manager position, and that position closes April 10th. And so, we cross our fingers that we get some good applicants for that position.
Okay.
And I'll, I will just note that we did receive confirmation that all Planning Commission applicants were going to attend. We're, sorry, we didn't see Zachary here, but we did get confirmation via email that all were to attend.
Any other questions for City Manager?
I do have one question. Is the library not included in the deal that we made with IERA as far as our free internet service, essentially? Reason that I ask is that I noticed that we cut a check for $49 specifically for the library internet service to them last month.
Do you know if that's?
See, that's something that, it's kind of funny you bring that up. We've been with IERA at the library for a number of years now, so that's been ongoing. But I wanted to get this kind of, this process going, and then, yes, reach out to them, see if that's something that we can add to the current contract we have with them. But it has been ongoing for years at the library is why you've seen that.
Well, and I, I assume that that was the case, but, you know, also assumed, you know, with the, the new contract, that, you know, we wouldn't see any more charges. So, I just happened to notice that, and while it's only $49, it's still $49, so.
Sure.
Don't want to be giving it up if we don't have to, right?
Understandable.
Thank you, appreciate that.
And I have one question on IERA. So, for all the residential customers, are all of our towers now installed, so that we now cover for those who were not covered previously by IERA, is now the city pretty much covered for those who want to now apply for IERA?
I think there's one outstanding out at the wastewater treatment plant, the weatherization tower, so that's the one outstanding, just couldn't get to it, do the weather and other things. But we're almost there.
So, majority of Escalon is now covered, and then, so now we can pretty much apply it?
As much as they could, based on installing equipment on our facilities. They may not have full coverage of the city, but as much as they can with the sites that were identified.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? We'll go out to the public. Any questions for the staff? Anyone online?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question for Public Works.
Bring it back, yep.
So, Justin, we've gotten a lot of storms lately, and I guess, just for the public's education, if, if they see a DI that's starting to back up, create flooding, how do we want them to address it? Obviously, we don't want them to go over and put themselves in danger and pull the lid, but if a member of the public sees a street that's flooded, how do they bring that to Public Works attention?
public works attention?
Definitely, there's a phone, a phone number online. Reach out to the city of Escalon. One of the ladies in the office, or gentleman, obviously, will answer the phone, and they will relay that message right to us. We also have a maintenance care system will put that on their computer, so if City Hall does, it gets after hours. Rip and dispatch also will get those messages and relay those to us right away. So, as soon as they call, within minutes, we will know and report to where it needs to be taken care of.
So, because we are in the rainy season, we should, probably should have done this a few months ago, but staff, could we put a little blurb on the website that is your street flooded, and they click on it, and the information is there, they can call the non-emergency dispatch, or they can contact public works? That way, the public is aware what to do in case the street becomes flooded.
Sure. Easy enough.
Thank you. Any other questions up here before we go to the next? Okay, we'll go to matters presented from the audience. The public may address the city council on any item that is not on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the city council on any item not on the agenda that is within the subject matter of the city of Escalon. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unused time may be, may not be yielded to another speaker. You may state your name and address for the record, however, it is not required. Due to state law, action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda, and except for brief responses, the council is prohibited from discussing an item not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to the staff or placed on a future agenda. The determination of whether an item is within the subject matter of the city is a discretionary decision made by the mayor. All right, at this point, we'll go ahead and go to the public.
Again, I don't expect anything tonight. I know you can't answer me. I just wanted to be let known that with the dent sidewalk project, to please, you know, if other funds come in, we talked about possibly doing other sidewalks, different areas of the town. Yes, I know I live on Sacramento Street, however, it's right in front of the high school, and there are holes in the street, like, you know, and they hit them with their cars, and they're not always going to speed limit. Just saying. You know, and there's a lot of them, and it's a very narrow street, and there are older people as well as the high schoolers, and then young, some, some young ones around there as well. So, it's not just the street, but it's also the sidewalks, and I see them trip a lot. We've got a good 6-8 inch gaps in our sidewalks on Sacramento, right in front of the high school, just down that first block, you know, strip, mostly on the west side, but at, at any rate, there's some really bad ones, and I've seen elderly people trip on those. They actually now walk on the other side of the street, on the east side of the street. But that and the street and the holes in the street, they didn't get sealed. I, I know they told you that they sealed them. They did not seal them. And then, so, so we've got both of those issues going on. I would hope that would be raised up as a consideration since it is right in front of the high school.
Public works, can we take a peek at that and just see if there's a solution?
Yeah, of course. No problem.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to the next step, which is the public hearing, unless there's anyone else that wants to say anything. Okay? Anything online? All right, we'll go to the public hearing. City manager?
Okay. Thank you, mayor. Dale and French. The item before you here is to consider adoption of an infrastructure impact fee specifically for the Liberty Business Park specific plan area. Also be considering the associated NEXUS study, and the purpose of the fee and the NEXUS study is to ensure the provision of required infrastructure in the Liberty Business Park area, which is located north of 120 east of Brennan. In that area. The specific plan was adopted many years ago in 2007. At the time, the plan outlined the required infrastructure for the area and how this infrastructure would be financed or funded. And the options then were citywide impact fees, which are ongoing, a plan area fee, which is before you tonight, direct developer financing funding, or other methods. The idea of a plan area fee is to collect funds from each development as development comes in, it's sort of put in a kitty, and then as enough money is collected, the infrastructure is installed. We recognize, everyone recognizes that one development cannot fund the entire 178 acres worth of infrastructure in the plan, so as development comes in, a fee is paid, it goes to the city, and then the city, as enough money is collected, as I just mentioned, installs the required infrastructure. It is the city's current policy to require new development to bear the cost of its increased demand on municipal services and facilities so as to not unduly burden the general fund or to put more pressure on existing ratepayers. The fee and the NEXUS study was prepared under the authority granted by the Mitigation Fee Act per California Government Code 66000. And to assist staff in this process, the city retained EPS, who does these documents, to prepare the plan and the NEXUS study. And we have two representatives tonight with us from EPS to answer any questions that the council may have. So, big gap in between 2007, when the specific plan was adopted, and the first development in that specific plan area, which is going on right now. Ideally, a specific plan area fee would have been adopted prior to the first development. Unfortunately, that's not what happened. As this development moved forward, staff identified that a plan area fee had not been adopted, or any other mechanism really to fund the full infrastructure, and so we've been sort of going at the same time as the development. We feel we did communicate this, and I know that's maybe not the main concern. We did communicate this in advance, that a, a plan area fee would be considered by council. We could not determine that it would be adopted by council, of course, but would be considered by council, which again is before you tonight. In simple terms, there is a list of infrastructure, there's an associated cost with that infrastructure, and then the fee is a division, basically the cost of the infrastructure divided by the amount of acres that is being developed, and there's some provision for the type of use. So, commercial has more impact on the traffic and therefore has a larger fee than the light industrial. And so, one of the things that the council has recently adopted is, is economic development, and, and staff recognizes the sort of natural tussle between economic development catalyzing future development in job-producing and sales tax-producing regions versus, you know, sort of the fiscal stability standpoint of ensuring that, you know, those who are initiating the infrastructure and services pay for that infrastructure and services. So, we recognize that is, you know, there's a natural tussle between those two, a natural balance. And, you know, part of the discussion I'm sure tonight will be in regard to that is the fee and the impact it may have on any current development and future development versus, again, the city funding its full freight of infrastructure to, to secure its future and to, to secure its future in the future. So, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have in that for public hearing.
I would like to ask the council if we could table this for a short spell. We have an economic board we're trying to put together. I don't wanna put the cart before the horse. I think there's a few things in the plan that are a little bit questionable for me, things like having six lanes and, you know, big water tower type stuff. I think we need to make sure we get this plan dialed in, because it's gonna be very important to the long term of this community, and I don't wanna rush it in a way that ends up really shooting ourselves in the foot. You know, we wanna make sure when we set this down, it's a place that the community, or sorry, the businesses around this area really wanna be here, and if we don't get this right, we'll have, you know, one place that's there, and then it'll be crickets for another 20 years. So, I think it's really important we get this right, and I think to do that, I think we need to wait for a little bit more input as well as, you know, digesting the stuff we already kind of know about the project. The other part of it is, obviously, we have someone that's already in that park. I think that because we are trying to, to get this right, it shouldn't, you know, hamstring them or prevent them from being able to, you know, continue to, to operate. So, I do think that we should allow them to at least start getting into the business, you know, with a sign of good faith while we're still deliberating this, is, is my opinion. So, I was hoping that I might get some support from the, the board. I would, I would support that with, I just have a question for staff, and I know we're not allowed to deliberate, but I was wondering if staff could possibly explain to the council how, what is the differentiator between the planned use fee and Mr. Yates' deferred utilities agreement?
So, to reset the conversation, in 2022, I believe, the city council approved for the development in question, Weldway, a deferred utilities agreement. Typically, with a, a new development, they are required to extend if needed, or at least connect to city infrastructure. We're not the county. We don't allow septic systems or wells to be operated. We require a connection to the city service. And so, the agreement that was adopted in 2022 provides provisions where the connection to city services could be delayed, up to five years if no future development move forward, or two years if a future, another development did move forward, or 180 days if the city so chose to extend the infrastructure. And so, I think these don't necessarily step on their toes. If a plan area fee was adopted for the entire 178 acres, we may and probably should go back and revise the deferred utilities agreement, depending on the direction of the council through the process to adopt the plan area fee, if that's what the council chose to do, so that we could fine tune how that moved forward. When the deferred utilities agreement was adopted and approved, I don't think there was a contemplation of a plan area fee, and so there's a few issues to work out, again, depending on the direction of the council, should they choose to adopt the plan area fee.
That's one of the hiccups I have, is I don't want someone who's bringing a solid business into our town to then be trapped into something, you know, that maybe wasn't completely, you know, visible. I know it wasn't on you at all, obviously, so I don't, don't take it the wrong way. But that's one of the, any concerns I see with this, that I feel like we really should be maybe taking this off the table and, and really thinking through this and making sure we get it right, you know, is, is how I see it. And in doing that, like I said, it shouldn't impact the current business from being able to move forward.
So, how long are you thinking of tabling this for, Mr. Mayor?
I mean, I don't think it needs to be tabled that long. I just think it needs to be tabled long enough to, to kind of address some of the concerns and get clarity, and, and then maybe through briefings, be able to, you know, put in our two cents. Mr. Mayor, I, I could, I could get on board with potentially putting off a decision for tonight, but I really would like to hear from the developer what, what their side of the story is in order to, to help further that discussion when it does come back. Absolutely. I'd be told, I would be fine with that. I think that's a good thought. So, just to be clear, you wanna bring him up, the Weldway to come up and talk?
Yeah, I would like that.
Okay.
Good evening. My name's Matthew Weber. I represent Mr. and Mrs. Yates and Weldway. I don't know if you had specific questions or you want me to address. I had sent a letter in. I don't know if everybody received it. They've addressed some of these issues, but I'm also have a few things I can address, or if you have specific questions, happy to do that.
Yeah, I would say it's your five minutes. Give us, give us your, give us your best shot.
Well, I gave you, I provided a letter. I'll address the deferred utility agreement in a minute. Our position would be that, you know, the fee as proposed is not appropriate. What the fee as calculated has, has some issues with it. Specifically, it's assuming that this entire development as designed in 2007, 18 years ago, is gonna be built in that manner. We know that's not gonna happen. If you look at the specific plan, it has two hotels. From what I've heard tonight and what I know about the town, I live very close, nobody wants two hotels right there. It has thousands of square feet of commercial that's not realistic, and it has thousands of feet of industrial that is not really gonna happen. What you really need to do is, and I agree with Mr. Mayor, is that you should take a step back and understand what's gonna be a realistic future development, and when is that gonna happen, and what do you need for that? Right now, if you adopted this, Mr. Yates would pay a million dollars into a fund that would sit there. It wouldn't give the city enough money to do anything. It would sit there. So, all you would be doing is taking money away from Mr. Yates. He can't get his business going, and he can't invest that in his business, and it's sitting in the city fund, which the city legally cannot use for anything other than that park. And essentially, what you're gonna have is a park that you're gonna kill, and you're gonna kill it because the fees are so exorbitant, nobody wants to build there. Like I said, it's gonna add another million dollars to the million dollars in fees Mr. Yates has already paid. It's gonna add $80,000 an acre to commercial property, which is, if you're gonna try to build, and what we heard tonight earlier, people wanna build on 120 right there, nobody can afford to do that, to build the facility and pay an additional $80,000 to the city. Again, because you have all these infrastructures that, that you don't need for this entire project, because the project's not gonna be built as designed in '07. The fee as outlined in '07 had certain infrastructure in it. Now, the city has added over two and a half million dollars of infrastructure with no real rational reason as to why. You have a $400,000 for a sound wall. It's unclear where that's going. You have a million dollars underground utilities. It's unclear what those are. You have a million dollars for a water tower. Again, it's unclear where that's going or what that's for. There's no analysis. It was just plopped on there, and, and it takes these fees, not only have you escalated them, but then you've added all this additional stuff. Again, there's no basis for any of that, and, and if you want this project to develop, you have somebody in there now, you've got some momentum. Don't kill it by adopting this fee. Take a step back, do it right. And if you don't adopt it right now, you're not losing anything. As Councilman Strohman indicated, there's a deferred utility agreement, Mr. Yates and Weldway. What that means is if you don't adopt this fee, Weldway still has an obligation at some point to bring utilities to the site. So, you're gonna get his contribution to this project at some time based on that agreement. So, why would you rush to adopt a fee that, I think you can all look at it, everybody can do the math, is not gonna work and kill that project when you can just take a step back, take some time, work with the property owners? Understand you have an agenda item to potentially adopt an economic committee tonight, appoint some people, work with those people. Let's get something that works for the city, that the property owners are paying their fair share, but not something that's not realistic, and everybody knows is not realistic. So, that's, that would be our request, that you table this, take some time, get the input from, we'll be happy to help work with the city. I'm sure other people wanna provide their input to get something that works. So, if you have any other questions, I'm happy to address. You know, we did submit with our letter, we, we have a report. We had an independent consultant look at this and say that it really wasn't a viable project, so it's not just me making something up. It's somebody who did some real analysis to come up with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Weber. I received your email, and I know Mr. Yates worked really-
And, um, I know Mr. Yates worked really hard on, um, working with the city through the plan, uh, and city staff. Why wasn't your email, why wasn't city staff included?
So, um, the email, I, I thought it was sent to the clerk.
No, it was just sent to the council members.
Then that was, um, I was at a state when it was sent out, and I asked somebody in my office to send it out, so I apologize for that. It should have been, there was no intent to, I'd asked to send it to the council. I wanted to make sure you guys had it, had a chance to read it. There was no intent. I believe it was supposed to be sent to the clerk, which I thought would have also distributed it. And so that was my mistake for not making that clear on my end, so I apologize for that.
Just wish the city staff would have seen the email too, and not just the five of us. I understand we're the decision-making board, but I know Mr. Yates really worked hard on those relationships and I don't think any of us were part of those, so it was kind of like, uh, okay.
Well, and, and really the, the, um, uh, the point was to hopefully get you guys some information. You know, we only, I have five minutes. It's hard to impart a lot of information. It was to get it to you so you guys could digest that and have, you know, we can have a, a dialogue or provide you with answers to those questions. And so you have, you're making an informed decision. That was our intent. But there was no intent to hide it from any city staff.
And next time, just a little bit longer, not Friday afternoon before a Monday meeting.
Fair enough.
I will say that was an awful lot to read in a very short amount of time. But, you know, ra- raised quite a few points, which, uh, to be honest with you, I don't really want to table the issue because, uh, it kind of leaves Mr. Yates in, in limbo right now. Uh, but unfortunately, the information that we were presented with, as he said Friday afternoon, uh, has definitely, you know, brought up an awful lot more questions for myself, uh, and I'm sure the rest of council are the same, uh, as far as how we came up with some of these things. Um, so I don't have a specific question for you. No, Jalen, you did not receive this email or?
I have subsequently, but not originally.
Okay. Um, and have you been able to review it?
Yes.
Councilman Kay, that's, that's why I was, I was hoping that, excuse me, we can allow him to keep moving forward so it doesn't hamstring the business that we're trying to, you know, intend to bring into the town.
100% understand your intent. I can just say if I was in Mr. Yates' shoes, I would want a definitive, definitive answer as soon as possible, so.
100%.
I hope that, uh, I hope that you'll understand that, that we're wanting to table this issue for your benefits, or.
I fully agree.
Good. Um, yeah, I definitely agree with you. The tableting it is probably the idea.
So do we have to make a motion to table it, city manager?
Yes, please.
I'll move to table.
I'll just say editorially, it's a lawyer's trick to send a letter at the last second. Sometimes I'm not saying that they did that on purpose, but they may have wanted you to table it. So, um, anyways, I wouldn't feel so bad.
Go forward.
Oh, go ahead.
I will continue, please.
I understand the tactics. I mean, I'm not an attorney, nor will I ever be an attorney. So I appreciate the candor. Um, it's a lot of information to digest and a lot of research to do in a, in a short amount of time. Um, and so, I mean, uh, I don't want to get into specifics, so. As you, as you were saying.
Sorry. I, uh, sure. So, um, the problem that we're trying to solve here with this fee structure, we are trying to get infrastructure and utilities, um, over to that area, and it is necessary. And this is more for the community than anything else. Um, and that utilities and infrastructure need to come across the rail lines somehow, right? And so that's going to encourage and attract more businesses in. So it's kind of like which one comes first. We have to get the utility lines past the rail lines, right? And it is an expensive endeavor. It's not something that we really can foot the bill for first. So coming up with a plan for that is something we need to do. Is this the particular plan that is the best? You know, that's obviously something we're going to discuss. But looking at the fee schedule before even seeing the letter, um, it does discourage commercial. It's, I mean, it's very one-sided. It is very, we're trying to encourage commercial coming into town, and by how lopsided it is, it really is discouraging any commercial development, in my opinion. So, I mean, I, however we're going to go forward, however we're going to get infrastructure and utilities, they somehow need to be brought by. I don't know how that's going to happen. Again, that's going to be some, this was trying to be a solution to that problem. Um, so that will be a discussion that we'll need to have, is how we do get that there so that that piece of land can be developed and we can move forward as a city and start thriving as a city. And what we've talked about up, up until now is how do we develop that land commercially, um, moving forward, and how do we get there sooner than later? So, um, anyway, but now we can move.
And by no means is this a dig at the city. We respect what you're doing and, and the hard work you're putting in. Um, but like I said, we want to make sure this, uh, in my opinion, that it's done in a way that, you know, we're looking at the long-term idea of sales tax, not the front, front end of it with the permitting and fees. You know, long-term, if we're looking at the city like a, like a person that doesn't die, then the long term's more important than the short term. And so that's where my mindset's at.
All right. So if we're, if we're getting into editorializing, I'm just going to throw this out there. The Liberty Business Park that was passed in 2007 does ma- does not match whatsoever the Liberty Business Park development of 2025, period. And so I think by looking at this fee, I think before we look at assessing this fee, I think we need an update to the Liberty Business Park specific plan, taking into account the development of Weldway.
Yeah, I would agree.
Need to update the plan because the roads, the infrastructure, everything that was shown in the 2007 plan, it's no longer applicable. I mean, maybe the sound wall, but the roads going here. Guess what? We have a building right there right now, so.
Can we see slide three? And it's in that phase one, correct? I mean, that's where Weldway falls.
Those are my, that's my opinion.
Any other statements or questions?
Yeah, just before we go to a motion, can we make sure there isn't any additional public comment?
Yep. Anyone else up here? All right, I'll go to the public. Anyone want to say anything?
My name is George Petralakis. I represent one of the landowners, Roxanna Schatz, in the business park area. I have a lot to say, but if the council's going to table it, I, I think you hit on a lot of what I saw in the matter. And it's really nobody's fault. I mean, it was suggested, you know, if you think about it, I've been out this for over 30 years now. I'm a land use lawyer out of Modesto. In 2007, there were very strong aspirational desires to do business park in San Joaquin, Santa Rosa, and Merced counties. But that's about the same time the real estate market collapsed. Um, so in terms of the fees getting set up, everybody lost interest in doing anything because for real estate, the end of the world had come. And then you had the sort of the second blow during COVID, which really upset the office market, you know, which you've got a good amount in this business park. And I really encourage you to read both the Downey brand le- uh, Downey Brown letter and the ALH report if you haven't. The ALH report, I think, is superior in describing sort of, you know, what's happened in the business park market, and I think really provides some guidance to the city and the stakeholders and the landowners on how to, how to proceed with it. So I'm going to stop there. I, uh, Jalen knows me. I could go on. Frank knows me a little bit too. I could go on and on, but I think with the, um, with the beneficial, um, attitude of the city and the stakeholders, hopefully, we can make some progress on that in the near term. So I'm going to stop there, unless there are any questions.
Any questions? Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Yates and Ms. Schatz.
Hold on one sec. Anyone else want to speak? Anyone else online? Okay, we'll bring it back to the question. Um, for Mr. Yates and Ms. Schatz. You want to do one at a time?
They can both come up at the same time.
Would you mind coming up?
Hi.
Hi.
I appreciate you both being here. Um, I really appreciate, I appreciate you bringing legal representation to protect your investment. We're your neighbors. And I, I hope that if both of you know that you could come to any five of us with any concerns, and we could certainly have a conversation about it. Nothing rose, throws up red flags to me when we have legal representing our own townspeople.
You have legal representing yourself, right? And so this matter was presented to the planning commission. We went to the planning commission twice, and then it was presented to you tonight with legal counsel. So we brought our legal counsel. It shouldn't offend you at all.
No, I'm just saying, feel free to come and talk to us. Feel free to reach out to us. We're, we're neighbors. We, we respect what you're trying to do. We respect what you're trying to do on your property, too, Roxanna. And, and we're here to work together.
Been a long haul.
I, I understand.
Since 1987?
I understand.
Yeah.
Appreciate your patience.
Yeah, I might be dead here pretty soon. I'd like to see this project happen.
But, but, I mean, if this council so chooses to table this, I mean, feel free to talk to us as council. We're, we're your neighbors.
Absolutely.
Well, maybe we should set up a meeting, a town hall meeting, and we can go through and discuss it. You know, without making decisions, we can discuss back and forth what we think's fair. We, we know we owe money. We know that, right? We know we, we have certain improvements that we need to make. We don't agree with this particular document. That, that's where we're at.
Yeah, I just, and when something adopted that I had six lanes, I would have no property left. You know, so it's, uh, there's a lot of things in there that really discourage me, and especially the cost per acre for commercial. I mean, I'd almost have to give my property away.
Well, thank you for taking the time, and we're here to chat.
Thank you.
All right. Um, anything else up here before we, uh, humor table?
I'll move to table this discussion. Um, do, do we have to give a definitive date, Frank?
No.
To a future meeting?
I, I would, uh.
Or you motioned.
Well, no, I would, um, if you didn't mind amending it to allow them to move forward.
This isn't stopping anything, though.
I think the current agreement by default is in effect.
Okay, so they can still move in and start, you know, operating this business? Is that what you're saying?
Whatever entitlements and agreements are in effect are still in effect.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah.
I just don't want to, what we're trying to do is get this right, and I don't want it to end up, you know, hamstringing the business that we're trying to bring in, so.
Sure they're happy to continue without an impact fee.
Well, yeah, obviously.
Well, just to, to clear that point, um, the impact fee, if adopted, would be due at building permit. We've issued two building permits and are working on a third, so, um, the process is not delayed then.
There's nothing else tied to this. Okay, just making sure.
So my, my initial motion stands as to table this for a future discussion.
No second to that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, all opposed, say nay. All right. We'll table it for a future discussion. Um, all right, we'll go on to administrative matters next. Um, number nine, city manager?
All right, one second as folks clear out. Well, we'll get going. So a relatively simple item before you hear, but there could be some discussion, of course, about some of the details. Um, at a recent meeting on March 3rd, the city council approved the econ, um, excuse me, the 2025, 2026 strategic plan, which outlined a set of priorities for those two years, as well as kind of a work plan for staff to implement the established priorities. The first listed priority was economic development, and a goal under economic development was the establishment of an economic development committee. We did put a date in there, um, of July 1st. So staff has envisioned a committee of the council would be two members of the council, which represents less than a quorum in tandem with three or more, depending on council's desire, people from the business community. And that was staff's proposal specifically from the bu- business community, um, so that government and the business community could talk, um, you know, hash out issues, talk about things like this, um, and really bring issues forward for council and the community's consideration. Um, we would be able to, um, talk about any number of things, but as plans, if we do an economic development strategic plan, you know, those types of things, we can bring, uh, items forward through this committee. So that is staff's, uh, recommendation as outlined in the strategic plan. And we did list a number of things to consider for your deliberation. Number of committee members, as I mentioned. It should not be more than two members of the council, but on the other side, the business community, you can have a different number there. Um, makeup of the committee members, you know, do you want specific representation? Do you want it more broad? And the recruitment process, just like a planning commission or another commission, we do kind of do the, um, recruitment out, a website, Facebook, 30 days generally. And then, depending on the number of applicants, we will interview, just like we did with planning commission today. And then meeting frequency, staff is recommending that we meet monthly. Um, it could be quarterly. It could be any number of, of months that you want, and it could adjust based on the need, um, but establish sort of a, a routine. So that is staff's recommendation, and be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, it'll allow us to really have a pulse on, you know, what's going to make business thrive. If we make business thrive, then the city will naturally benefit from that. Um, any questions up here? Any questions for staff?
Just a, kind of a, a comment for, um, for looking for feedback from council. Uh, as we were alluding to, I mean, a few minutes ago, we had two, um, strong community members who were really interested in the future of Esclon, and Mr. Sibbs and Sims and Mr. O'Glasdeon. I always butcher it, so. Um, while I think, yes, we do want three business owners, um, I'm curious to see if the, how the council felt about two, adding two at-large members um, that aren't part of the business community, because then it brings the voice of the community with the businesses, and then hearing feedback from council members as well.
Well, I think with, if you're talking about people with their credentials out here, I could see where that would be beneficial for those conversations. Um, if you're talking about, like, uh, um, someone that has no knowledge of business, I don't know how that wouldn't necessarily help.
Well, no, it's, it's the same process that we do with planning commissions. So, I mean, Mr. Sims, I'm just going to call you Nick. Mr. Sims and, and Nick, um, actually, I'm just going to call you Doug. Doug and Nick both prepared a resume with their experience. Um, they've both been involved in business community outside of the city of Esclon, so they can provide input within the city of Esclon. I mean, we don't want, want somebody that has zero business background coming in, but that's our job to vet those candidates.
Makes sense. Yeah, that makes sense.
But I don't know how the rest of the council feels about it. Are you suggesting making the committee seven members? Correct. So we would have two council members, three business owners, and then two at-large members.
And then those.
Meaning of at-large, uh, community members with, um, business experience. They attend the meetings, or they're like alternates? I'm still. No, they, they attend the meetings.
Attend the meetings, voting powers, all that?
Correct.
And they're not excluded from being business owners as well, correct? I mean, it could be five business owners.
Well, yes.
Okay.
My point is that.
I think sometimes you get too many, too many people and, what is it, too many chefs in the kitchen?
Right.
And that could sometimes make it go sideways. That's what my one concern would be, is, uh.
And I unders- I totally understand that. I just, I, I feel like there, there's people that have a vested, vested interest in our community and want to be part of the decision. to be part of the decision-making process and because Nick is a retired police chief, because he doesn't own a business, are we excluding Nick from applying to that committee?
Well, I guess you could, you can, you know, make the other seats open as well. In other words, you can move it the opposite direction, you know, where the three other members are, you know, they're able to put in their application. In other words, not being a current business owner, maybe it's like they've been a business owner at some point in their life or.
Maybe not a requirement that they are a business owner.
That way we don't step on toes like retired people potentially that have, you know.
I think anybody would be able to apply, so the makeup as listed on page 180, to ensure an experienced, engaged, connected, and diverse segment of the business community is represented and to ensure various economic development-based interests are represented. Preference would be given to applicants that represent business owners or executives, chamber of commerce, property owners, nonprofits. Nowhere in there does it say that it must, right? So.
Yeah, you're right.
Anybody can apply.
You're right.
And it's up to us to find what's going to work best for that committee. And I would hope that it is diverse and a different segment. A one-sided committee isn't going to move our needle.
I guess what confuses, and I appreciate the explanation, council member Ingle. I guess what confused me was the number of committee members. The first bullet point that says two council members and three or more members of the business. I'm assuming that's business community. I mean, we heard from Nick. I can't speak for you, Nick, but I'm willing to bet you probably don't want what's going on in Manteca to come to Escalon right now and the amount of growth. Hold on one second. But, but that's just trying to get more people engaged in the community. That makes sense.
So I would, I would support five other members, five members and two. I mean, to be very specific, we would just get five applicants and then we'd be able to sift through those and then two of, two council members.
So total of seven or a total of five?
Seven. Two, what, two of us, five people from the community.
I would disagree against that. If only five people apply, even if two of them are highly underqualified and have no business on that committee, we would be in a place to accept them. I think three gives us an opportunity to sift through what would be the best candidates or best members for this committee, especially for a town our size.
What if we started with three and then recognized if it was necessary to go to five? You know, that's, that way we're putting our toe in the water, you know?
That sounds like a pretty fair plan. I agree with both your statement and Councilman Ingle. You know, too many chefs in the kitchen is your terminology. I definitely agree with that and like Councilman Ingle said, you know, we do want to make sure that we do have the opportunity to decline people if necessary. So I would think that five is probably the number. Just my opinion.
Yeah, I would agree. I think that, at least to start with.
Yeah, well, and we can leave it open and, you know, the two council members then end up, you know, sitting on it. Should they, you know, give the feedback that, yeah, why don't we go ahead and accept two more members? You know, we got 37 applicants, you know, that sort of thing, you know? Then I think that we could make that adjustment later on if we wanted to.
Be kind of curious to hear from the community.
Any other statements up here? Okay, we'll go to the community. Anyone in the public?
I would just make the suggestion of specifying how many, if any of them, can be a business owner but not live in Escalon. We do have some of those who have businesses in town but don't necessarily live here. So similar to the recreation commission where we allow only so many members who don't live in town but have kids that do the sports, maybe say of the three, only one of those people can be someone who resides outside of Escalon, something along those lines.
Uh, thank you. Anyone else?
Just a caution, if you go with three business people from Escalon, you're going to get a lot of advice to improve their businesses. I think you ought to leave it open for suggestions and, and make sure you're not heavily weighted in the business section, because somebody's going to become an incident. I want parking. You guys have had to deal with that before. We need somebody or members that will want to expand rather than improve their own properties.
Makes sense. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll go to online? No? Okay, we'll bring it back. Any other thoughts? Oh, yeah.
I would probably make your applications business experience, like it doesn't necessarily have to be someone who owns a business, but maybe they've been in a management or accounting or things like that that could bring a different perspective that would help in the economic growth of our city.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you.
I have a question for Doug and Nick. Would you guys consider applying for this position?
Sure, absolutely.
Come on up.
Sure, absolutely. And I understand all the comments and I agree, Councilman Ingle, too many chefs in the kitchen create, create a disaster. But yeah, absolutely, I would be and, you know, I would agree with her statement. You do have to have some kind of business knowledge, but then don't exclude the public because the public wants to, the public really has a say, would like to have a say in what is developed in town. So if you exclude it only to business owners, again, they're going to focus on what they want to see, where I think it's important to have public input on how we grow.
Thank you, Nick. You wanted to talk.
Doug?
Doug?
I agree with Nick.
Okay.
Speak into the microphone.
I think, I guess my only concern is the economic development committee is the amount of time that's going to be required. It sounds like to really do that kind of job, you're going to be out talking to business people and doing things like that, or is it just a group that's going to sit and talk about?
Probably a combination of those two things.
Yeah, I think that'd be my concern is it seems like it might take a lot of time. It might be more than a monthly meeting. It might be a.
Old-time job.
Couple of days a week going to lunch with business owners and different people and trying to find out what their needs are and how we can reach out to them. Back when I worked for Stanley Andrew, we, we tried to get Noah's bagels to come to town. So we went up to Emeryville and we actually, as a building inspector, they had me go and we actually walked through their factory for them and said, hey, this needs, you got this problem? These would be things you'd have to address before you came here, but, you know, we can work with you. So it took that kind of time and that's, I'd be willing to do it, but I think it might be more than a once a month kind of a thing.
Thank you, Doug. Anything else?
Just, just for staff. So for, I guess, to address the concerns that were brought up, obviously, if you're on council, you have to live within the city limits. If you're on planning commission, you have to live within the city limits. But what about those folks that are an active business owner that live a mile and a half outside of city limits?
I think part of that is amending it probably and part of that's what Councilman Ingle had addressed earlier, that in theory, anyone can apply, right?
So council member Ingle, are you thinking that it's just wide open? Application process or what are your thoughts?
Yeah, as far as experience, it should be wide open, right? There's varying degrees to business experience. I would favor being in line with our other committees, which would be a requirement of some form of tie to town. I'd definitely be open to discussion for that. So whether it was that they currently operate a business, they have operated a business, they reside in town, we want the best possible outcome for this committee, which, before I forget, I do think that the committee, after hearing Doug speak, that the committee should have a budget to be able to, to meet with, with folks. But if we wanted to make it simple and just keep it in line that two are required to be residents and one had to either reside in, how do we look at it? The school district or unincorporated areas? What do we do with rec and planning?
So I'll just mention each one is tailored to the matter in front of them. So city council, that's the way our government works. You have to reside within the community. Planning commission, we do have it with, you know, everyone resides. Rec commission, as was brought up, is about the sport. And so you can have those who have kids in the sport but live outside of the city limits. And so staff did not bring up residency issues because of what was raised. We do have business owners who do not reside within or, you know, business executives but have a tie with a business here. Premier Brands or Hogan or whatever it may be, right? And so up to discretion of the council, but seems like that should be the, you know, the denoting factor here of, there's some tie to the business community in Escalon.
To that point, to that point, I would strongly encourage all five of us, we all know business owners within town and we know people that are residents that have businesses outside of town. So I guess, do we want to put limits on it or do we just want to reach out to the people that we strongly would like to see them apply for this committee and just apply?
I think we just encourage people to apply. I mean, I, I know plenty of, I know several business owners who grew up here, owned several businesses, but then moved to a big house out in the country.
Right.
Right? So they do, all their kids go to school here, they have businesses here, they don't, I don't want to exclude that person that lives out in the country just because they live out in the country. They do all of their business here. So I would, I would ask on their application, like their ties to Escalon business and we can go ahead and consider them at that point.
We could weed through it.
I think.
And I also don't want somebody that owns one big business but lives in San Jose. I don't want that either. So that's going to be something that we're going to have to sift through.
Makes sense.
As we go.
My, my thought that's kind of the opposite of that is, you know, if Tim Cook from Apple said, hey, I want to come serve on this committee and help you guys out, I don't know that I'd tell him no. So, you know, I think, I think within reason and obviously, you know, that's kind of the extreme, you know, circumstance, but, you know, I think that if we had, you know, some kind of residency or tie, you know, what's, what is your interest in, in serving on this committee for Escalon, you know, and how are you tied to town? You know, I think that would be helpful, but I also don't think we should be excluding really anyone, because there is always a possibility that you have someone that would be very beneficial, that maybe, you know, their tie to town is they drive through here on the weekends a couple of times and they just like to help us grow it, you know? I don't know.
Any other thoughts before we?
To that, to that point, I would just make a request that none of the council members reach out to Elon Musk, because we have our own Elon Musk over here. Doge has been alive and well in Escalon before.
I think he's moved to Texas.
Any, any other thoughts before we take that next step? Okay, so do we need a motion? Okay, anyone want to make a motion?
I'll motion to approve the staff's recommendation for the establishment and formation of an economic development committee.
Specifically with five members or how are you doing it?
Sure, with five members.
Okay, so.
Just as recommended.
Just as recommended.
Okay, as recommended, okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Take your pick.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. And no nays, okay. We'll go on to number 10.
So the Escalon Police Department relies heavily on our reserve officers to cover shifts for officer, for full-time officers' trainings and time off. They also will come out and do prisoner transports and work special assignments such as community center events and high school sporting events. All reserve officers must complete a field training officer program, also known as an FTO program. The FTO program for full-time officers generally takes between 12 to 16 weeks to complete. For reserve officers who are not working 40 hours a week, it can take several months to over a year to complete. When we hire reserve officers, after they have completed an orientation for a few weeks of, a few weeks of FTO, they would be able to work cover shifts and full-time officers for, with a full-time officer or special events with other reserve officers. In the past, they would work these assignments prior to completing an FTO program. In October of 2024, the California Commission on Peace Officer Standards and Trainings, also known as POST, modified its FTO guidelines. Until an officer completes an FTO program, they can no longer work any law enforcement assignments if they are not working under the direct supervision of an FTO. This means that our level one reserve officers who have not yet completed an FTO program cannot work unless they are with an FTO, of which we only have three. Although doing an exact comparison is extremely difficult, since October of 2024, the Escalon Police Department has significantly increased the ratio of overtime pay to reserve pay, keeping in mind that reserve officers make A-step officer wages, which is currently 3150 an hour, compared to time and a half for officers that may be at E-step, which would be 5743 per hour, and some of the shifts have even been covered by our sergeants, who make up to $70 per hour on overtime. From October of 2023 through February of 2024, the city paid $57,000 for coverage, $30,000, $31,000 of which was paid to reserves, $26,000 was paid out in overtime. From this last same time period from October of 2024 through February of 2025, the city paid $53,000 for coverage. Only 12,000 of that went to reserves, which was a reduction of 19,000, and 41,000 was paid in overtime. So from 2023 to 2024, 53% of money going to coverage shift went to reserves, while 46% went to officers in overtime. And this during the same period from '24 to '25, 23% went to reserve officers and 76% went to, paid out in overtime. If all of the overtime was worked by an A-step officer, the comparative reserve cost would be $27,000, a savings of about $13,000. If all the, if it was all worked by a C-step officer, the comparative reserve cost would have been 24,000, a savings of 16. One of the biggest hurdles in getting a reserve officer to clear FTO is pay. Most people cannot go three to four months without any form of income while they dedicate 40 hours per week to clearing the FTO program. They work primary jobs to support themselves while consume, coming out to work their FTO when they are available. If an FTO is not available during the hours they are available, they cannot work on their FTO program. The Reserve Officer Trainee Program will give officers a source of income while they can dedicate their full time and attention to the FTO program. This would also be a contract position, which is concluded after the officer completes the FTO program and is certified to work solo. The average cost of an entire program per officer will be about $18,500, which is 14 weeks at A-step officer wages. Even after being in the FTO program for several months, reserve officers who become full-time officers generally still need about eight to 10 weeks of FTO, because they start plateauing and around between phase one and phase two, when they start doing more on their own, without coming out on a consistent, regular basis, they're, they kind of halt in their advancement of the program. If a level one reserve, generally still need about eight to 10 weeks of FTO before they clear, which costs the city $13,000. If a level one reserve officer later becomes a full-time officer, it would have cost the city an extra $5,000. That amount, however, does not factor in the amount of money the city will save in the reserve officer covering shifts rather than paying full-time officers and sergeants overtime.
Oh, thank you. Anyone have questions up here?
Sure.
Thank you, chief. That was a lot.
Yes.
So can you, can you summarize that on, on what that looks like from just, you know, finding the reserve officer and just high level?
So currently, we, so prior to POST, revamping their POST guidelines, we'd hire a reserve, they'd go through an orientation process, they'd start their FTO. After a couple of weeks, when their FTO is like, okay, you're good to go, you can ride with other officers, you can do community events, you can do transports, we would call them to come out and do those. And so we would pay them. And so we would pay them A-step officer wages for covering officer vacations, covering training, prisoner transports, community center events. Now POST made it to where they cannot work outside of the direct supervision of an FTO. So if their F, an FTO is not working, they cannot work even with another regular full-time officer until they complete their FTO. It takes several months for reserve officers to complete their FTO, because they're not coming out on a full-time basis. They'll come out once a week. They normally start coming out once to twice a week. That drops down to once or twice a month. And we've had reserve officers on training for over a year. They'd still, at the time, they would still be able to work cover shifts and all that. Now they can no longer do that. So we currently have, we have five reserves, three of, two of which can cover shifts, three of which can no longer cover shifts, which is why the ratio of overtime went from 53% going to reserves and 46% going to overtime, to now only 23% going to reserve and 76% going to overtime. It's hard to actually formulate how much more that costs, because I don't know exactly who is working. I know several of our overtime shifts are covered by our sergeants, because they're the ones, they're, they're available. We've got officers and sergeants covering shifts that would previously have been covered by reserve officers. This will allow us to get officers cleared of their FTO program after 12 weeks. And if they don't complete their FTO program in a timely manner, we can cut them. And so once they've completed their FTO program, when they do become a full-time officer, there's no more training that they have to do. We can just roll them directly into a full-time position. Currently, the reserves, if they're still in the FTO program, when we do hire them, if they haven't completed it, they generally have about eight to 10 weeks to go, so.
So would this be beneficial for the three who aren't cleared to, to ride with a non-FTO? Or is this like for, outside of the five reserves that you just spoke of?
So, once they've cleared FTO, we, we currently only hire Level One reserves. Once they've cleared FTO, they don't have to be with another officer. They can ride completely by themselves. So they're essentially a full-time officer that can work by themselves.
Quick question for you, Chief. So in, in plain English, this is going to allow us to be more flexible and save us money? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, well, it'll allow us to, once again, start using reserve officers to cover shifts as far as saving money. I can't say that necessarily, I, I believe it would save money in the long run. As far as kind of calculating that out, it's very difficult to quantify. However, worst-case scenario, it would cost the city an extra $5,000, approximately an extra $5,000 per officer to get them through this training in a timely manner, rather than have them sitting on FTO for a year and a half. And then when we hire them full-time, they still need 10 weeks on full-time FTO before they're cleared.
So I, I would say two birds with one stone here a little bit, where POST law has changed. We can no longer rely on the reserves like we used to, because they need to be FTO-trained. So this will help with that, to build our bench of reserve officers. At the same time, the second bird is our public safety. In the strategic plan, the increased bench will help us to recruit officers. Many of the officers, as identified in the staff report, have come directly from the reserve program. And so instead of, you know, hoping that people from the outside complete the reserve program through the FTO, we're incentivizing them a little bit, which will cause savings. Maybe not direct savings, but in the long run, I think savings build our bench at the same time. So it really is sort of a, we think it's a win-win situation here.
Yes. So it looks like an approximate 5,000 more per Level One Reserve Officer. What I'm seeing is it's going to keep our reserve officers more engaged and more likely to stay with Escalon. And I think, is that the, the goal here, right? Correct? And so engage with our community, engage with the system and the program, and almost be appreciative for being able to become, I mean, that's why they're here, why, it's why they've become an officer, right? And I think retention is one of the things we're really working on here in Escalon. And I can almost see that, I mean, that, to me, is worth.
Can we tie it to retention?
The retention of reserve officers, and so they don't get tired after a year and a half waiting to get trained. Is that correct? Am I getting what we're?
Is that something we can tie, tie to retention for a period of time?
What do you mean?
Like if we're going to incentivize them, right, and do this program, can we, like, ask, basically ask them to stay for at least a minimum period of time?
I'm not positive if that would be legal or it would fall under indentured servitude type.
What I'm thinking is like, once we, if we have them trained and we have openings open up, they are now, have the ability to apply, and they wouldn't have had the, were hiring people from the outside, we very well could have them trained, ready to go.
Makes sense.
In the past two years, we've hired Officer Fagoni, Officer Jamals, Officer Palomino, Officer Harrison, Officer DiGiulio, and Officer Ryman. All of them with the except, so Officer Harrison was the only one who had completed his FTO program prior to becoming full-time. So he went straight into a full-time position. Everyone else required at least a couple of months of further FTO to kind of hone their skills and get them to where they needed to be. If we had this officer, the officer, the Reserve Officer Trainee Program, what we're essentially doing is just front-loading those training costs. Rather than bring them on us full-time, we're paying them for their time in FTO. We're paying for their time in FTO as while they're a reserve officer. And then when we make them full-time, they can go straight into a full-time position without having to sink training costs into them.
Okay.
The training costs have already been, basically, we're pre-loading training costs. And the reason that we hired Officer Gunther, who was not a reserve, is because all of our reserve officers who wanted full-time job, we've already hired them as full-time officers. And so I'm trying to get more reserves, so when we do have the openings come up, we can just roll them straight in.
Okay.
My only question, Chief, is how does that work? You mentioned about how Officer Gunther is currently with.
Officer Jamals.
Yeah, Officer Jamals has the, and the FTO program. So in this situation, we create this program. Are other officers able to be that FTO individual to, to other reserve officers? Or do we only have one officer that's able to handle the FTO program?
We have three, we have three full-time officers who are FTOs. Officer Harrison is now an FTO, Officer Jamals and Officer Gek are FTOs. Also, prior to Harrison and Jamals becoming an FTOs, Officer Vieira and Officer, Sergeant Vieira and Sergeant Zambrana are also certified FTOs. So they were also doing FTO, FTO-ing, training new officers. And technically, I am also an FTO. I trained, I can't remember if I was an FTO for Ryman and DiGiulio. But I, up until recently, I have been training also. But we're trying to get our command staff out of the FTO-ing and get it more onto our officers, but we need to kind of retain people longer for that.
The only reason I ask is because if you put a call out for this new reserve program, and you have 30 applicants, and we only have.
Oh, yeah, no, we would, we would tier it to where we, we'd only bring on what we can train at a time. I would not want more than two people in FTO at any given time, just so we have one FTO as current, well, one of our FTOs will be assigned the person, and we'd have a third for an alternate, because it gets, having someone in your car all the time can get tedious. The training can get, it wears on you.
All right, any other questions up here before we go to the public?
I just had one. Once their FTO changed here, do they need to be FTO-trained in another department? Should they decide to leave?
Until they are a lateral, yes. So POST, POST requires everybody to go through a minimum of a 10-week FTO program until they have become a lateral. So once they become, once they have hit past their probationary period and they get their POST basic certificate, at that point in time, they are considered a lateral. So as a lateral, technically, they don't need any FTO program like norm. Most of the officers that left Escalon to go to other agencies, after four to five weeks, three, between three and five weeks, they go through a break-in period, and then they're good to go. If they haven't completed, if they haven't gotten their POST basic certificate, they would need to do a minimum of 10 weeks FTO in order to meet POST standard for that agency.
Any other questions? All right, we'll go out to public. Anyone in the public like to comment? No, we'll go to online. All right, we'll bring it back. Anything else before we consider this? Chief, did you come up with this on your own?
It's something I've been thinking about for many years in order to improve our FTO program and our reserve program, because it's, it's always been a problem about incentivizing them to come out. Because like I said, normally, when they first get hired on, they're coming out. Sometimes they'll come out, like, on a full-time basis for the first couple of weeks. And then it's like, okay, I'm out of the academy, I need to get a job. They get a job, and they can come out once or twice a week. Then they can come out once a week. Then it comes in once or twice a month, and then they just kind of fall off. And they're perpetually stuck in an FTO program for years. And previously, we were able to still use them for coverage, so it hasn't been as big of an issue. But now with POST changing its guidelines, it's become a significant issue. Because now we can't even use, we can't use them for coverage until they've completed their FTO program.
Oh, I just want to give you kudos for thinking outside the box and thinking of a program, how to improve your reserve status, but also whether you thought about it or not, all the issues that the rest of the council brought, or not issues, but opportunities that the rest of the council brought up, whether that's related to retention or staffing or building the camaraderie with the reserve officer. I think it's a win-win. So kudos to you for thinking outside the box. Anything else before we humor a motion?
Great idea. And I think as a student, I'd rather have 14 hours consecutively of learning on-the-job training than I would spread out over a year or a year and a half. And I would much rather have a police officer helping me out there that has gotten their training back-to-back-to-back instead of a split-up. So great idea for the safety of the city. So thank you for bringing this to us.
Okay.
What I, I'm going to venture to say, you probably have officers that come in as reserves and then end up never actually becoming police officers, because they've got another job to pay the bills and then drop it altogether, I'm assuming, right?
Yeah, not very often. A lot of the ones that come in, they just, they really want to do this. So they'll just, they'll stick it out as a reserve until that full-time spot opens. Because they realize, okay, I'm not going to complete my FTO while I've got a secondary job, but they'll at least stay on as a reserve with us. And like I said, we'd use them for training, we'd use them for cover, we use them cover shift, we use them for special assignments, and they come out on the weekends when they're available. And they can make a little extra money, they'd be working. And then when a full-time position opens, they would generally get preferential treatment, because we would, we would kind of know them, they're a known quantity, they've already completed some of their training, and so we know them. And we'll, we generally hire from our reserve ranks first.
Right. Okay. All righty, anything else? Anyone want to make a motion?
Sure. I'll motion to authorize Reserve Officer Trainee Contract Position with the Escalon Police Department.
Second that?
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All righty. We'll go on to 11 here.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Simple item, beginning January 1st this year, the FPPC, the Fair Political Practices Commission, began implementing AB 1170. In essence, this requires the online submittal of Form 700s instead of hard copies. And so we wanted to update our conflict of interest code to be consistent with that state law, or that law.
Any questions for staff? Any question? No questions, all right. Out to the public, any questions? No? Online?
No.
Come back, anyone want to make a motion or have something to say?
I'll motion to approve Resolution XX-25 to approve updates to the city's conflict of interest policy to follow the requirements set forth under AB 1170.
Any second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, and no abstain. Number 12.
Moving through. All right. This item before you is consideration of a city council handbook. The, really, the intent of the item is to outline to council, the community, and staff matters that pertain to the council, agendas, that type of thing. So really, the, it will outline council policies and procedures relative, as I mentioned, to the works and actions by the council, and to provide guidance to those serving as a council member, and then as well to the public.
So basis of education for new council members?
Yeah. And it will kind of outline the interactions with council. And it touches on, just kind of walk through, most of the topics in the handbook. The role of the city council, pretty basic. Council powers and duties, procedures, if there is to become a council vacancy, agenda management, including placing items on the agenda by council or residents, and the role of staff in preparing and posting the agenda, appointments to committees, commissions, that type of thing. Special or emergency meetings. We see some special meetings. We have, well, in recent years, yet to see an emergency meeting. Procedures at council meetings, again, interaction with the public, rules of debate, motions, how the public addresses the council, decorum of meetings and interactions, and then council communication sort of outside of council chambers and the dais, and really out into the community. And so we wanted to put this all in a document, have you review it, look through it, and all establish, right, as a body, that these are sort of the rules of engagement and the policies by which we commit to follow.
Okay, so to be clear, you want us to take this home, you're saying? Or you want us to kind of approve something tonight?
Up to the discretion of the council. If more time is needed, you can certainly deliberate and discuss. It was provided in the agenda package for your review.
Anyone have any questions or concerns up here?
I read through every word of it very carefully to make sure that you didn't mention that I was going to need to cut my hair or take my hat off.
Her handle that one?
Any other questions?
No cowboy stuff, okay? That's, that's against.
Any other questions?
I keep them pretty clean.
No?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, there is something I would like to address.
Sure.
That's on page 14 of this document. And Councilmember K pointed it out somewhat during council communications last week. We don't want somebody to go off on a hour-long diatribe about an issue by any means. However, recently, we, we had a community member submit an agenda item request, and there was some confusion as far as what, who was the presenter? Was staff the presenter? Was he the presenter? Et cetera, et cetera. And so one of the things I would like the council to consider is under item number six, manner of addressing council. If the individual, did I get patron? No, the one on the screen is 20 pages. The one in our packet here is 21 pages. Keep going.
Jalen added a pair, a page about my hair, didn't he?
He did.
Keep going.
I don't, I remember reading it.
Keep going.
By decorum.
Up above decorum. Up above decorum, yeah.
We'll find it.
Six, are you looking at here?
Here matter.
Addressing the council.
Yeah, it was number seven of page 14.
Addressing the council.
Resident, resident agenda request items.
Well, manner of addressing the council is what he's.
Yeah, manner of addressing council, time limit. What's in there? As outlined in this handbook, any resident who requests an agenda item which is subsequently approved by the council is able to introduce that time, generally being provided five minutes. All items before council or city staffs or partner agencies, and therefore should primarily be presented by city staff. Okay, so, here's what I'm getting at. There was obviously some confusion by that individual. And what I would like the council to consider is whatever you guys are looking at there on the screen, to note that the mayor has the discretion to.
For that. An hour.
Keep going, we'll find it. Watch the rolling screen.
Just do a search.
Go on the rolling.
Control F.
Okay.
It's a scan. I almost thought you'd done the control F.
So, all I'm trying to ask for is that to amend this last sentence that says, "The mayor has the discretion to impose time limits for comments from the public." Yes, generally, five minutes, absolutely. However, this could extend up to 15 minutes maximum at the discretion of the mayor. Because if a member of the public has a presentation to share, say they took the time to do a whole long PowerPoint. At 10:06, the mayor has discretion to impose time limits for comments of public, generally five minutes. And, right, I'm just asking. May waive the limitation when deemed necessary to more fully accommodate a request to be heard. I'm just asking for consideration to extend that to a maximum of 15 minutes.
So, you want to have an upper limit versus no limit?
Correct.
Is that, is that in respect to all public comment for agendized items and matters from the public, or is that just for items, agenda items that were requested by the public?
Agenda items that are requested by the public.
So, number seven specifically.
And by approving this, I can't interrupt anymore, and I'm not a huge fan. Okay, so, if that's the case, Councilmember Engle, if a member of the public takes the time to put together a presentation, all I'm saying is that if there's information that the public feels that we should understand, and they take the time to put together a presentation, and they have 20 slides, it's kind of hard to cover all that ground in 20 slides. So, but, that's the discretion that's made by the mayor.
That's in here.
It is.
It's already in here.
And I'm sorry, Sean, my last comment about interrupting was just in general about this, if we agree to this, that means I can't interrupt, it's a few pages back.
So, that's in here. What I'm hearing is you want a hard stop at 15, like they get to 15, and you want hard stop done. And so, that's what I'm, right here, it says, I mean, the mayor is allowed to let him go forever if the mayor wanted to.
I'm trying to avoid the confusion that happened a couple meetings ago because we didn't.
My understanding was that I didn't have that power, but, no, I do now.
If we adopt this, but, I mean.
I understand it now.
But, so, what do you guys think? I mean, is that putting too tight of limits on it?
I think so. It does make you as flexible.
Okay.
You know, if it's like something that needs a little more time, because if you do put a hard stop, then it's a hard stop. You know what I'm saying?
Right. I just want to give the community an opportunity, if they take the time to do a presentation, they're given longer than five minutes. But we also don't want to go on for 90 minutes about a topic that.
Which this will allow for.
Okay.
Is, I guess, what I'm hearing, that's what I read, I could be reading it wrong, but that's how I read it. But may also waive the limitation when deemed necessary to more fully accommodate a request to be heard. So, that means, in theory, I could go 100 minutes if it was critical information for the community to hear. That's the way it's written, right?
It is. I would just say that.
Not that we would hypothetically do that, but I'm just saying.
But, yeah, I mean, I would just say that there's still First Amendment implications for all of this. So, if you can't, you can't, you have discretion, but you have to apply the discretion with, it can't be based upon the content that you want, like, it can't be because you prefer certain content more than another, it has to be content neutral. So, for example, if you gave every, not that you would ever do this, Mayor, anyone on the council will do this, but it has happened in other locations where certain mayors will give certain speakers preferred treatment. That's obviously the thing we want to avoid. But if you have a good business reason why, and it's not based upon preference or preferred speakers, you can, you have, you can exercise some discretion.
Generally speaking, I would just want people to be able to finish up their thought.
Exactly.
So, if it's like five minutes and 30 seconds, or someone who doesn't really care, I don't really care about that. You know what I'm saying?
Right.
But to Councilmember K's point, the last meeting, how do we avoid somebody just dragging on and on and on?
Well, and that's why I do think that a hard stop is, you know, absolutely necessary. And I think that, you know, really, the way that you have looked at that discretion is, you know, give them a minute or two extra to wrap up what they're saying is one thing. You know, in that circumstance specifically, that member of the public was asked to wrap it up several times and still did not. I would say if you are going to put any kind of hard stop in there, you know, beyond the five minutes and the, you know, slight discretionary period, I don't know that I would go any longer than 10. You know, I don't think that I would give it any more than 10 minutes regardless of who it is. As Frank explained, and it also outlines very well in this council handbook, once that is turned over and put on the agenda, it becomes a staff item to present. It does not belong to the member of the public. They have the same right to comment as every other member of the public, but they are not the presenter regardless of how much time they invested in putting it all together.
Makes sense. I appreciate what you're saying, but I do think, I do think this make, the way this reads makes it more flexible. So, 10, obviously, 10 minutes would be a logical stop in my head, but.
I have a question. Would we be able to just take the agenda request form that we have for the public online and possibly attach some decorum to that, or maybe a line that says you typically, you have about five minutes, or, you know.
That's a good idea.
To go ahead and present this, or comment on this item. That way, when someone requests it, that information is given at the same time.
Could, would you consider adding a little box that's, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
But adding a line that just says, "Will you be preparing a presentation?" That way, it removes any ambiguity because I spoke with that individual, and they were under the impression that they were giving a presentation, whereas we kind of limited them to five minutes. And if it's very clear that they have a presentation, then when you see the agenda item request, you know that they're actually coming in with some stuff that's prepared ahead of time.
But they would be able to prepare it to fit into their five minutes.
Yeah.
And I would say, some people may go on and on, and they don't need a PowerPoint to go on and on and on. Right? So, there's no way of, I think the key is letting them know what the expectations are, and they can figure out whether they, how they want to.
Yeah, I like what Pro Tim Walker's saying. I think having that kind of, you know, bold statement, or something that lets you know kind of the rules of engagement, so to speak, so when, so there's not, you're not caught by surprise.
Right.
I think that's a good thought.
I think that's probably the best idea, you know, if we just said, oh, if you're going to present, you know, a PowerPoint, let us know. We could be sitting here looking at somebody's PowerPoint of their cats for two hours, you know?
Because they can, they can say, well, this is what I'm going to say, and they can actually sit down with the city and say, this is what I'd like you to present if I don't get to it, or.
Under, under decorum, page 14, item three, persons addressing the council. Persons who address the council shall not make slanderous or profane remarks to any member of the council staff or general public, any person who makes such remarks, who utters loud, threatening, personal, or abusive language, who is unduly repetitious, or engages in extended discussion of irrelevancies, or who engages in other disorderly conduct, conduct which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct, conduct of any council meeting, shall be subject to removal from the meeting. Same goes for audience members who are not or have not addressed the council. I think that covers what you guys are talking about.
Yeah, I feel good with what is here, plus adding what Pro Tim Walker has said.
So, is that a motion?
Well, I have to take it back to public. Anyone in the public like to say anything?
Of course.
Come on down.
You only have five minutes, huh?
Start that clock.
Well, let's see, we got a mayor who, what were you, who wanted to ram, I don't know, I forgot your words. Oh, it's on a power trip, there we go. And this one over here doesn't want to interrupt, I'm sorry, it's all kibbishing, it's late, I'm tired, it's fun. My comment on this is, I think this is a wonderful idea, by the way, I think it's fantastic. But from this side of the room, I think adding something on to the, you know, if somebody wants to submit something for the agenda, it definitely needs to have something on there that states, "You won't be presenting this."
Yeah.
Put everything that you want to be presented on this request so that they understand that we're not presenting it. But then, I think there also needs to be an allowance that allows for someone who can articulate and communicate to have five minutes or more. I would be really sad to see you do a hard stop at 10 or 15 minutes, and this is my reason. I have seen, I've sat here for enough years and seen some really good conversations. If you had a hard stop on some of those at 10 or 15 minutes, you would have killed some really good things that happened in this room. I understand the reasoning for it. I missed that meeting, I can't believe I missed the fireworks, oh my gosh, you guys. Because it didn't all pick up on the, I was watching, and I didn't hear everything you all got to hear, sorry about that. Anyway, I would be, I would say, leave it at the discretion, now, oh, power trip, that was it, you're on a power trip now. Because now he knows the power he has. I would say that now that you know, that you can say, hey, that's it, you know, chief, get out of here. I would, I would like to see that kind of openness continue, only because I think if you put hard, fast rules like that, it's going to feel like detention, it's going to feel like junior high. We're adults, we're residents, and hopefully, the majority of us know how to communicate and know how to speak. And when you say, you know, sit down, I've had enough of your nonsense, Sherry, I'll go sit down and sit in my corner, but I, I would be, I think that would send the wrong message to the community, when you want more openness, you want more people to come, please. I think that sends the wrong message from this side, from this side.
Well, makes sense.
I understand what transpired, I understand what you want to do, but I don't think that's the right.
Well, we don't want to be emotionally reactive, I think.
Who, you?
You know, so, it does, it does make sense.
So, anyway, I hope I made sense. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, Ms. Hill, let me just say one thing.
Am I over my 10 minutes? Okay, go ahead.
I wasn't trying to confine it to, I wasn't trying to put a hard stop at the end. All I was trying to allow for was an opportunity, if somebody goes longer than five minutes, they have that opportunity at the discretion of the mayor, so.
But they already have that discretion, and now that he has his power trip, and he knows what his authority is, you know, that kind of covers it.
So, now it's clear.
Oh, gosh, anybody that's re-listening to this is going to think I'm serious. Anyway, he, you know, he already has that discretion, he has that authority. So, I say, go with what you've got, use that authority, use it cordially, you know.
But I do like the idea of adding a decorum to the agenda item.
She, any other statements, or questions, or anything to add? Okay, we'll bring it back online. All right, anything else at the dais?
I'll just say, you know, while I appreciate the work, I don't agree, it's going to take our friendly, if you guys read it, it's going to take our friendly ability, ability to communicate out of the question, because if you approve it, I am going to hold you accountable, and I hope you do too, Mr. Mayor, to all of the rules of engagement.
No, I, I think it's a good place to be. I think not having a hard stop is a good idea. I think adding in what Pro Tim Walker's saying is a good thought as well, as well as what Sheri's saying, with making sure there's a distinction as far as the presenter and understanding with that, you know, what they're able to do.
So, Oz, because I have a question for Councilmember Engel. Are you seeing, I'm questioning what you're seeing in there, are you seeing?
So, like us talking like this, inappropriate.
Okay.
In order for us to get recognized, we would have to ask the chair for recognition, and then speaking, that way, we would be able to be uninterrupted except for three reasons, which you can go back through and look. So, it just kind of takes, it just makes our meeting formal, which I get it, it's probably from, you know, Robert's Rules, right?
Yeah.
So, it's probably pretty standard, but we've had the flexibility in our small community to engage one another and be kind of free. And, you know, for me, approval of that kind of takes that away and makes it more formal, which, you know, I'm all for rules, because I will toe whatever line that is. My statement was sheerly about, you know, if you're not following the rules that we've agreed to, somebody needs to hold that person accountable, which, which changes the vibe of our meetings.
I see you being able to kind of interject and help each other out. You know, that, that would actually be lost in this, right? That's kind of where you're getting at.
Yeah, the personal, the small community, the ability for us to go back and forth. And I did see that there is a rule in there for us to suspend the rules.
Right.
For certain circumstances.
Yeah, and I will, I'll say this, your point is excellent, it's a very good point, it's a, it's a, sometimes council members, elected bodies, think that policies, and more policies, and more policies get them out of problems, but sometimes it just creates more problems, because then you have a lot of inner, you can have a lot of dissent and division over the interpretation or the application of the rules. Really, this is meant to be a help, not a hindrance. So, what I would say is this, even under Robert's Rules, it says for small bodies, the rules should be informally, can be informally applied. So, for example, there are lots of procedural things that happen in these meetings that aren't strictly legal, but like, not in a, I don't mean that like in an illegal way, I'm being tongue in cheek. What I mean is, even under Robert's Rules, bodies over 13 members, they say, the parliamentary rules should be relaxed and should be happened informally. And this is a body of five, it applies with even more force. So, if you want, we can adopt it tonight, we can always make changes and tweaks to this policy. If we want to make it easier to suspend the rules, we can. But I mean, that is kind of the, the pros and cons.
Can we adopt this as a guideline?
I wouldn't say that, because some parts you're going to want, some parts you need more, some parts you're going to want to be able to have some teeth to it, and some ability to say, no, this is the rule. I mean, we all lived through COVID, so we understand what the word guidelines is, right? And, and we understood that there was a semantic range there, that some people heard that as a law, and some people heard that as just advice. So, I mean, even that doesn't really clarify us. I would just say, let's live with the document, and let's make changes as we, and if you want, we can come back once a quarter with edits to this policy. This is the first time in the city of Escalon's history we've ever adopted a document like this. It's not going to be perfect right out of the gate, but this can be a living document and can change as we work with it. So, the policies can change.
Like Councilman Ingles saying, I would want it to be an informal type of, you know, I guess, guide you along.
If you want, we can add some language to the, to a motion tonight that basically said, we want, the intent, we could add, we could add some language to the policy that says, as it relates to the councils, the way they conduct meetings, and how they conduct parliamentary rules and operate, that as a council, these rules, when it comes to the parliamentary stuff, can be, the goal is for these to be informally used and applied, and if necessary, these are the, these are the formal motions you can make. But in other words, you can't be, you can't be deemed if you don't formally amend a motion the exact right way, as long as we all know what that, what that means. Or you can't be censured if you start talking and then you don't wait for the chair. So, we can do things like that as it relates to our own parliamentary procedure, I just don't want, but there's, there's things in the policy that relate to the agenda requests from the public. I don't know if we want, we want to take the view that that's just informal, like, we should probably have some clearer dividing lines for that, but in terms of.
Can we really enforce what happens outside as a city council handbook, not a city resident handbook, right? So, I'm sure that as they all come in there, they feel they're, they're due their five minutes and can do. and can do and say with it as they, as they please.
Yeah.
I mean, to be funny, if you just add, at the mayor's discretion at the end of every paragraph, you kind of fix it.
So Councilmember Engel, there are like items that you just looked at and like, oh, hell no, like, no way. Like.
Yes, right there, see, I interrupted you, so if you go, oh, I'm not a huge fan of that, I want to be able to interrupt you.
Yeah.
Where did it go?
Procedure at council meetings.
Essentially, can I be recognized by the chair? That, you know, essentially every time that we speak, you know, if we, if we adhere strictly to this, that is exactly what, you know, we would need to do.
Yeah.
There would be no, you know, back and forth discussion, you know, I would have to be asked to be recognized. I yield my time, you could ask me to be recognized, you know, we would, we would literally have to go through the mayor every time that we have any discussion.
Which concerns me, I, I don't see myself doing that. You could have a mayor at some point who is trying to, you know, cancel out us, council members, boys.
Recognized by the chair to respond to council.
I'm hearing.
Come on, you guys, wait on the difficult, difficult side of the dais.
We'll stop.
There you go. Point of order.
Hey, guys, hold on one second. Hey, let's reel it back for a second. All right, so the biggest concern, I think it's, it looks like it's around, you know, everyone has that kind of thought, is if we get too formal, we're going to probably, you know, shoot ourselves in the foot, we're not going to get as much, really, quality input, is the way I see it. I could be completely wrong, but that's how, that's what I'm concerned about.
Well, and I don't know if there's a way for us to adopt this as enforceable as needed, you know? So when I, when I keep talking and refusing to allow Sean to get a word in, you can say, you know, council member, you know?
Well, my prob, my concern is if you, if you put it all on the mayor, right? What ends up happening is, when you, when you get a mayor who wants to stifle a voice, it's very easy to do that.
Yep, absolutely.
You know what I'm saying? So we don't want to have that, I think.
But at the same time, the mayor is the chair of the meeting and that's your authority, so.
Yeah, but say, Sean, you asked me to talk and I say, nope, no Sean.
Right.
Sean doesn't, Sean doesn't talk tonight. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I was going to freeze over. Sean doesn't talk.
So I mean, I think it's.
I think your head might explode.
I think that the discretion of the mayor should not be confused with like, you know, all power. And then there's other provisions that would block.
Yeah, exactly.
Some, some of that.
Best meeting we've had as a council.
I, I think, you know, Frank, Frank said, no, not guidelines. And, and I agree with that in general, and that there are some things that aren't guideline-ish. I personally think chairing a meeting is an art, not a science. We say generally five minutes in here, but if there's forty speakers, you're not going to necessarily give everyone five minutes. And so we do use discretion. I think the intent of this document is guidelines for you, guidelines for the public to know what they are dealing with as they come in to a meeting. You know, is it unlimited, is it five minutes? So we've said generally five minutes, but of course we have discretion.
Well, I'm not against, necessarily against this from a conceptual standpoint as far as like giving general, like a general overview of roughly how things should work. But I, but I do worry about pinning us in too much.
Chair, may I be recognized?
Yes.
I just wanted to follow up with my question to Councilmember Engel, that are there items that is just like absolutely not?
While I one hundred percent appreciate the work, yes, items on pages one through twenty.
Okay.
So what does council want to do? Want to take it back and, and chew it over a little bit more?
I guess my question is, does it, instead of calling it a formal handbook, could we add it to be?
Like an educational sort of?
Guidelines or?
So I'm going to be sticky, I'm going to be a stickler about that. I don't think that gets us out of the woods of all the concerns that you have. There are things, this, this policy and handbook has multiple facets and they get at different issues. That may work for some of the stuff, it's not going to work for the other stuff. So I just think that if the, you know, the, the better thing maybe, this is the first time you've all had a chance to look at and discuss it at a meeting, maybe the best thing is getting the sense that we want to make sure we don't lose the vibes, as I heard tonight. We work on some changes to it with a view of to see where we can have some, build in some flexibility and discretion and guidelines, but where it's appropriate and maybe bring back a better revised document. And we can also just do that. I mean, this is good direction for us, because maybe this was too formal and this was too inflexible.
I kind of like that idea, take it back and kind of maybe deconstruct it a little bit.
I mean.
Sorry, what do you think?
Thank you.
You would be official.
So in the, in the first paragraph of the document, City Council Handbook, on the, it's two sentences, it says, it is, in the second sentence, it is intended to provide general guidance and advice for those serving as an Escalon City Council Member and the general public. So, I mean, it's out there, we can table it, we can take our time with it, but some of that verbiage is right there in the introduction as you're reading it, that this is an educational document, pretty much, for your new council members. And a good review for us, obviously.
Yeah.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. If this is so strict, I mean, we enjoy having, and obviously there's a lot that we can't dialogue with the community, but it's nine thirty-five at night and Sherry's still here. I mean, if, if we follow this, it would be so strict that we couldn't even have that discussion with Sherry.
Well, I, I think we take it back and maybe bring it back to us, like.
I never really would. It seems like everybody was for it until we started to read it and then something went sideways.
Well, the more you chew it over, you know, makes sense.
You still haven't answered my question, Mr. Chair, Councilmember Engel.
Pages one through twenty, I'm not a fan of rules that I'm required to follow, so if I can avoid them, then that's, that's to my benefit.
Thank you.
All right, so.
I motion to table the discussion on Escalon City Council Handbook until we have some further revisions from staff.
Second down.
All righty, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. And.
One abstention.
One abstain, okay. All righty then. So we can go to council communications now. We'll start with Jeff, or sorry, Councilman Jeff.
Point of order, Councilmember K.
Councilmember K, sorry, hold on.
I just want to again thank the applicants that applied for our planning commission. I really appreciate all three of them. I wish the other two were here to hear me thanking them again. And of course Jenny, and look, look forward to seeing you on it. Aside from that, it's awfully late and I'm going to stop right there. Thank you guys all for your time tonight.
Well, last time I went to Engel, so, let's go Councilman Sean this time.
Point of order, it's Councilmember Stromm, sorry.
Okay.
Councilmember Stromm.
I learned that from Councilmember K.
So yeah, I, I would second what Councilmember K said. Really appreciate everybody taking the time to apply. And Jenny, welcome back. It's good to have you back. And really appreciate the input and feedback that we got tonight. I do want to make mention that on Friday, I attended the Career in College Day at Dent Elementary. I was speaking to Ms. Hilstrom's fifth grade class about being a representative on council. And so one of the things that her class is going to be doing is putting together what things that they as fifth graders would like to see within the city of Escalon. So that will be presented at a future council meeting for our consideration, if you will. But similar to me recognizing the students at the Science Olympiad last meeting, this week, or this meeting, I want to give a shout out to two other students or two other groups of students. This past Saturday, the Escalona High FFA Club attended MJC Field Day and really knocked it out of the park. They had a lot of first place and second place awards. I don't have them all listed, but really did a phenomenal job. And then the winter sports program just wrapped up. And I saw a statistic, but I believe something like seventy percent of the students in winter sports have a greater than three point six five GPA out of four point oh, which goes to speak that the focus isn't just purely on athletics, but also the student athletic, the student portion of student athletes. In particular, there's one winter sport athlete I would like to recognize, and that's Frankie Rodriguez. He had a phenomenal, phenomenal wrestling career at Escalona High. He's a senior, did an awesome job at two eighty-five. I do not want to wrestle you Frankie, but really appreciate everything that you did to represent the city of Escalon in your wrestling career. And the coaches that really helped mentor him throughout his whole wrestling career. So kudos to you Frankie, and kudos to Big Frank for all of his mentoring and being a good dad. And last, but certainly not least, just want to say thank you to Justin for recognizing the national holiday, otherwise known as St. Patrick's Day, and to you Jenny for wearing green. And Michelle wearing green.
Are you going to give Michelle credit or what?
Everybody else.
Selinda, Selinda's on it.
What's that?
Selinda's on it.
And Selinda.
So Chief.
Chief.
French has got the socks on, just tell everybody that.
So, yeah, happy St. Patrick's Day and appreciate everybody's hard work.
I believe it.
All right, we'll go on to Councilman Engel.
All right, somebody, somebody put me on sixty seconds, right, ready, go. Jenny, congratulations, you'd be a great addition to the team. Corned beef and cabbage this Thursday, if you haven't bought tickets, go out and buy them, it's going to be a really good time. Suggestion for minutes, I don't know if we're able to, to utilize AI. I'm using it in my, my own career to summarize long meetings, to gather action items. So if that's, there's potential, since we are already recording and transcribing the, the meeting, be great and maybe a lot less work for Michelle, except for to maybe fact check. And then, last but not least, I didn't, it wasn't intentional to kick dirt in your face over the handbook, because that's kind of how I felt it went. This is my own personal preferences with rules. I think you did a great job, I think there's lots of great information in there and there are some pertinent things. Just not a fan of extra rules, but, but you did, you did a good job. And if I wasn't sitting here and I was sitting out there, I would probably say it the opposite way. Like, yeah, make them follow the rules. All right, was that your six?
That's it.
Okay, I got it unless.
Pro Tim Walker?
Sure, I wasn't going to say this, but off of that, for this handbook, we might just want to call it something else instead of a handbook and have it as decorum information for new council members and, you know, give it to them as they come in. And so this is just a piece of information. And I know we get the big thick brown act thing, but some of it doesn't stick. This is good little points and snippets, so that's something to consider. And coming in, like that was a general, just a general guidelines in that first paragraph. It's kind of how I see it. Now I see it a little more serious now that Councilmember Engel has brought that up. So that's just a suggestion, maybe we can just change the name of it and call it a day. The other thing I do want from this, now I changed my page here, but I would still like to suggest that on the agenda item request form that we have online for the public, that we do put something there that suggests, let me find my. Person's addressing. Oh, got it, thank you. That all items, was it, all items are primarily presented by city staff and that the public still has, let's see, generally provided five minutes to comment. Something along those lines when you get the request form, whether it's on the form or on a secondary attached document that has some general guidelines for when you're requesting an agenda item. If I could get backing from another council member on that.
I'll support that.
All right.
All right, and besides that, that's good, it's late. Happy Thanksgiving, happy St. Patrick's Day.
Long meet. So I'll finish it out. I just want to say thank you for the cookie. It was awful nice of you to make those for us. Other than that, I don't have much else to add that hasn't already been discussed. So good meeting tonight and thanks for all your participation.